The hour of 7:30 has arrived. I'd like to call to order this business meeting of District 116 for November the 19th, 2019. And before we take a roll call, I just want to give a shout out. Tonight is my son's 30th birthday.
Oh.
And he said he would be watching, so...
Oh.
Happy Birthday.
This is my chance to say something to him. All right, from there, we'll go to roll call.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Exum.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Pulaski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Hall.
Here.
And President Emmett.
Here. We have a quorum present. We're going to correct this evening's agenda just a little bit. We're going to move 7.0 to right before citizen statements, if that's all right with everybody?
Okay.
Yep.
All right. With that in mind, let's go directly into commendations and recognitions. Were there any other modifications or adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Oh, don't forget your call for a second. Do you need to do that before?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I am going to, our first, for people who are following the agenda, is I'm going to invite Karen DeBusch up to the front. All right, yep, that's you, Mr. Bush. So, we want to recognize Karen DeBusch, UMS Band Director. As you can see from the picture there, she has been selected to represent Illinois in an upcoming issue of the 22nd Annual 50 Directors Who Make a Difference issue. [applause]
I'm really excited to represent Urbana. I have several parents who nominated me, and that I just asked them to, and it's very, it's a lot of people who actually get nominated, so I was really surprised and pleased. So, I would like the parents who helped write this, there's one who's not here, but would you guys stand up and be recognized, because you are the reason for that.
Yay.
Yay. [applause]
There's one other, Jane Luskowski's mom did. But I've worked for Urbana for 30 years, and I've had such a great time. Yes, school teaching can be difficult. That's life. But I can't imagine working anywhere else. I've had a number of your kids, the 30-year-old today. Happy birthday, John. But I just want to thank you for the wonderful experience of being in Urbana, and it's been my privilege to be here, so thank you.
And this is a, before you leave, a timely recognition, because some of you may or may not know, but many of us know, that Mr. Bush is going to be retiring after 30 years of service to Urbana.
Yeah, I hope to still be here a little bit.
Yes. So, if you could come on up, so we can kind of make, yes, she will sub, we've had that meeting and discussion, and she still wants to be very involved.
Selective.
Selective subbing.
Yeah.
Come on up. Yeah, we're going to shake hands for this. It's a big one.
Oh, boy. This is going to be tough, but you deserve a hug too.
I know. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So short.
You're going to do yourself?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. I can do one. You can chime in. How about that?
Is somebody else coming up? Is somebody else coming up?
Oh, for Linda, yes, I'm going to invite Linda Atherton.
No, for you?
Yes, Linda.
Why don't I just invite her on?
Yes, that's perfect. One more hand of, round of applause for Mr. Bush.
For this one, I'd like to invite Linda Atherton to come forward.
And if you have anybody with you, Linda, that you want up, it's up to you.
You're all set?
Yeah, you're all set. This is weird that I'm doing this, but they made me put it on the agenda, so...
I was wondering when we were going to do this.
I know.
My name is Linda Atherton. I am a unit commissioner and executive board member of the Prairie Lands Council, the Boy Scouts of America. I come for you guys today to recognize Dr. Jennifer Ivory Tatum. She has been selected as an Albert K. Fretwall Outstanding Educator Award recipient for 2019 by the Prairie Lands Boy Scouts. That's an award fairly recent that recognizes outstanding educators who mold their students and help them grow in ethics and values training to be members of the community and make differences over their lifetime in the course of their students. And Dr. Ivory Tatum is an outstanding example of someone who lives that in her life. I will share with you just briefly that she was described as being open with communication, making sure everyone feels heard and respected. She was described as truly walking the talk and talking, walking the walk and talking the talk for what Urbana School District says it's about, meeting the needs of students, implementing quality curriculum, and using trauma-informed practices to support all students and staff. Dr. Ivory Tatum's also been active, not only with King School and as an administrator here in Urbana, but also with Cub Scout PAC and a Boy Scout troop that her kids have been involved with, and with CU mentoring one-to-one. So, she received recognition with the Boy Scout Volunteer Recognition Dinner at the beginning of the month, but we have some other things we would like to give her. There's a plaque.
Beautiful.
And her certificate says, "The Boy Scouts of America presents this award to Dr. Jennifer Ivory Tatum for service to young people by preparing them to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes."
Thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Go ahead.
And, I was going to say, on the screen, I think another person who was really instrumental in this is Mr. Valensik. I know he was, he's not here tonight.
He's not here tonight.
He works in a district up north, but he was instrumental in this too, so thank you to Mr. Valensik for your, thank you, Karen.
He worked at the district for several years, and I had the pleasure of working with Alex to help prepare this nomination, so well deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming out on a late night.
No problems.
And the next one, it's a lot going on for me in November, guys, so... This was Lone Star Lodge. I was very grateful and honored to be one of the recipients for the 2019 dedication of service to the community. The other esteemed honorees are Reverend Parks from Pilgrim Baptist Church and Dr. Ali Watts Davis from the University of Illinois. So, that is just a glory maitre, I was supposed to put that in there, so... That happened two weekends ago, so...
Several of us were there to...
Yes, thank you for everyone who came from the district. It was a big group.
Okay, with that, we'll return to citizen statements. And if you wish to address the board this evening, please fill out a golden round sheet and send it to our recording secretary. We have several here, and so we'll call the names in the order that folks have been here. I'd like to remind everybody that five minutes, and please, and when you come forward, please give your name, and be in front of the mic, so the people at home can hear you well. So, the first of those is David Guth.
Mr. Dem, Mr. Demmett, and members of the Board of Education, as you recall, I spoke on the record at the October 1st BOE meeting in support of the proposed SRO intergovernmental agreement. Today, my stance in support of the proposed agreement has not changed, but the growing number of cases of Urbana youth either possessing or using a gun clearly has. According to recent statistics from the state's attorney's office, the number of delinquency petitions involving boys under the age of 18 accused of either possessing or using a gun was seven in 2017. This number more than doubled to 16 in 2018. Most recently, 25 such gun-related cases were filed as of September 29th, 2019, and we're only three-quarters of the way through the year. According to these statistics, the rate of incidents involving youth either possessing or using a gun has nearly quadrupled in two years. Based on the above statistics, as well as Chief Seraphin's statement at the November 5th BOE meeting, it's firmly established on public record that the number of local youths possessing or using guns has experienced a significant increase over the past two years. Additionally, let the record show that these gun crimes are occurring among the same youth that physically and verbally assaulted our son 12 times in sixth grade at UMS four years ago, despite the establishment of a no-contact clause and years of intervention from clinical professionals. A brief cursory search of Urbana youth possessing, excuse me, a brief cursory search of Urbana youth possessing guns generated numerous news articles. And in my email sent to the board, I shared three links to recent significant media releases. The first was a WCIA report, which described three Urbana youth arrested a little over a week ago in Hoopston in possession of a gun and stolen vehicle. Their arrest resulted in a police chase, in which the three youth fled from the vehicle after driving over a street sign and hitting a house. Of the six recent incidents listed in the September 29th News Gazette article titled "Six Recent Cases Involving Juveniles and Guns," four involved Urbana youth involved in serious crimes involving guns. In another News Gazette article, "A Variety of Issues Fueling Rise in Gun Crimes Among Area Teens," it shared various in-depth perspectives on the variety of issues that are fueling a rise in gun crimes among our area youths. In this article, Reverend Willie Comer shared that he once recently asked a group of 20 local boys if they had access to a gun. Every kid raised his hand. Chief Seraphin stated in a link to the article I just mentioned, "No matter how we count them or what metric we use, our gun crimes are up for 2019." In the same article, State's Attorney Julia Reitz states, "Always the goal in a juvenile prosecution is to accept responsibility, rehabilitate, and move forward to become productive citizens." But as she continues to explain, "In the case of any public servant, there are competing responsibilities. These are very serious cases. Always the goal is protecting the public. While I realize that this vote is a budgetary decision, partially, my understanding is that the prorated amount of $275,000 to fund the two student resource officers for this academic year has already been allocated and approved. It's also my understanding that the two full-time SROs supporting UMS and UHS have been on campus since the February 5th incidents last year, thanks to the generosity of the city of Urbana. While these expenses are covered this year, I would hope the district could cut discretionary expenses in other areas, so we are not left with deciding between the competing priorities of students' and teachers' mental health and well-being against their physical safety and security. I encourage all of you to strive to balance these responsibilities as public servants and vote in favor of the proposed SRO intergovernmental agreement as presented at the November 5th meeting. As elected school board officials, it's your primary responsibility to provide a safe environment free from disruptions and conducive to learning for all students. A student must feel safe to learn, and a teacher must feel safe to teach. As always, thank you for listening and for your tireless service to our schools."
Thank you. Teresa Sweeney is next, and after that will be Linda Reynolds.
Thank you. As both a parent of two UHS students and a nationally-certified school psychologist at Jefferson Middle School in Champaign, Unit 4 Schools, I'm writing to support USD's current proposal to employ two full-time SROs, one at UMS and one at UHS. I am currently part of a committee revising our trauma response manual in Unit 4. I've been on the trauma response team in Unit 4 for eight years. I have sat with and supported students and staff after they have lost a friend, classmate, or student following a violent event. I know firsthand the impact that this has had on people. It's important to note that the first step in our trauma response manual is secure the campus. Our school is not secure because our community is not secure. Any other belief or assertion is diluted and foolhardy. Urbana is well-resourced in dealing with the follow-up after a traumatic event. Are we truly as prepared, are we truly as prepared in preventing such events from occurring in one of the schools? The campus needs to be secure and safe in order for students to proceed up the hierarchy and grow towards self-actualization, referring to Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. I'm highly concerned about the opposition to the upcoming board vote regarding two full-time SROs. I encourage all board members to vote in favor of employing two full SROs. I've worked at Jefferson Middle School for over 10 years, and during that entire time, Unit 4 has employed, two has employed five full-time SROs, one for each middle school and one at each high school. It's been my experience that the SRO has contributed positively to the school culture and climate, assisted in maintaining order in the building, and secured the campus. In the time that I've lived and worked in this community, there have been an increase in violent crimes committed in the community and by youths. I work with students daily who live in violent neighborhoods, and they're not able to go outside with friends for safety reasons. School is their safe place, due in large part to the staff who are there to support them and instruct them, including the SROs. There's a clear link to trauma experienced by students negatively impacting the academic achievement and functioning of students in schools in the weeks following a shooting or violent event. There's no denying that our students are experiencing such trauma. In addition, the violence in the community has contributed to the chronic stress that our students experience. It's clear that the school is not merely to instruct in academics. The SROs contribute positively to the school culture by maintaining order and securing the campus. They have a relationship with students, and they understand the mitigating circumstances and situations. Students confide in them when a student, when a situation is carrying over from the community or when it's developing in school, and they're able to prevent, mediate, and neutralize situations that they may not otherwise have complete knowledge of if they weren't part of the schools and a person in the lives of the students. Research shows that they actually advocate for a lesser charge for students when they are involved in crimes than a police officer coming into the school who doesn't know the student and doesn't know the culture of the school. We never know how many situations they truly prevent. We only know how many situations they participate in and how they support students. I fully support the employment of a full complement of mental health staff in the schools to work in tandem with the SROs. I recognize the burden that this places on the community in terms of taxes. We've had a police presence in the Urbana schools for many, many years, and after the intense violence and increased violent situations last year, the police presence was up quadrupled to meet the needs for safety in the building. The current staffing has been supported by staff at both, in both the UMS and UHS administration. I can speak to the fact that the climate and culture of the school has settled down significantly this year. This can be attributed to many changes, one of which is the increased presence of the SROs. I'm frustrated by the citizens in the community opposing the vote for the SROs. I've seen the petition that has been submitted to the board, and several of the names of the, on the petition, either don't have a school in the middle school or high school, and they don't even live in the community. I don't think their opinion should influence those making the decisions on these issues. They're not stakeholders in the community or in the school. Secondly, I'm frustrated by several Urbana residents who are in opposition but don't have a child in the middle school or high school or any public school. They're stakeholders in terms of decisions about their taxes, but they're not directly impacted by the violent events that have occurred. They don't have a complete understanding of the size of the secondary campuses, nor do they fully appreciate the issues that older students bring to school due to their development experiences, home situations. Furthermore, it's foolish for anyone to believe that a significant violent event is not a concern in our building, or that mental health professionals alone can address all of the needs of severely troubled youth in our community. The community we live in is a reality. How do we simultaneously prepare for an active shooter, planning with students to practice for the drills, at the same time we're minimizing the concerns by not having the appropriate staff who are trained to address the situations? I think for many, this is partially a political and funding issue as opposed to a true social justice issue. I was almost at the end. So, I just wanted to say, I fully support all of the board voting to employ the SROs. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Reynolds, followed by Laura Orr.
I would like to say that it's really important to understand that we definitely need to have more mental health facilities for families. We also need to have this done in school. Yeah, school's supposed to be safe. It's supposed to be a place to learn, but it's also changing, because now it's a place where we need more than that. And because of that, I'm not for law enforcement in the school. I agree with, I know about student resource officers. This is my second generation in the Urbana School District. I would like to say that, thank you, Mr. Bush. I don't know if you're still here, but you're wonderful, and I'm really happy for you and everything that you have accomplished. And retiring, we're going to miss you, but don't, don't be gone long. Also, I'd like to say that it's really, really important that, what about our kids? They need to have trust. What are they going through? What are, what are the kids who are going through with what they're going through, families feeling? I mean, it takes a whole community. It takes everybody. And I'm not for from school to the prison pipeline, because you know what? This is my second generation. I've lost, I've seen a lot of smart, intelligent kids lost and left behind. It's not right. All kids deserve an education. I can talk about other states, because in my volunteer work, this is not just a problem here, but I was told that I need to focus on Urbana. Well, if I want to go across the street and focus on Champaign, their problem is a lot serious than ours. They have a whole lot more problems than we do. They have law enforcement in their middle school and high schools. Every day, there's a police car there, from the time school starts to the time school ends. You know, I'm, I'm just saying that Urbana is a good school, is a good district, and together, we can work to help these, help our children. They need help. It's about our children. It's not about punishing them or sending them from school to the prison pipeline. It's about giving them a chance. No, no, a C or a D is not, is not good enough. It's not passing. What about college? We need to give more than what we're giving. That's all of us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Laura Orr, followed by Philippe Menanto.
My name is Laura Orr. I'm a current Urbana School District parent, an Urbana School District alum, and a longtime active community member. As seen before by this board, I believe you are moving forward with your decision to quadruple the number of school resource officers in our district with limited stakeholder comment and buy-in, lack of research, critical thinking, and reflection. So, although I would rather discuss alternatives to security resource officers based on years of research and hundreds of articles about the ineffectiveness of our SROs in our schools, I will instead shift to my concerns about the ways in which you will measure accountability, transparency, and the hiring of more SROs in our schools. Urbana schools have employed an SRO since 1993. That should be 26 years of data to look at, to show examples of incidents directly involving the SROs, ages of students most in contact, successful de-escalation incidents, and the breakdown of the demographics impacted by these SROs. Sadly, I cannot find any of this data anywhere, and this should 100% be used in your current inclination to quadruple the number of SROs in Urbana. Given that this information seems non-existent, from what I'm guessing, it is a lack of infrastructure to support this type of collection system in the district, so then I have to ask, how will you plan to track these current new hires? How will you report to your students, families, and constituents on the effectiveness of this proposed SRO squad? How will you proceed in determining retention? How can students, parents, guardians, and community members know that any records that speak to this effectiveness are being kept? The board talks of being committed to input, community stakeholders, and students. If that is true, I would highly recommend a diverse hiring committee for these SRO positions that includes students, guardians, community members, and any staff members that would be directly working with these new SROs. Is there a plan in place for this to happen? How do you plan on creating an effective review procedure at six months, a year, and after that? How will you decide what an effective SRO looks like? How will you integrate students, and families, and guardians, and community into that process to have a say? Who decides who can serve on this committee, and how will you ensure its equity? You should be gathering at this point that your process needs third-party accountability. As you proceed with your desire to quadruple the SROs in our schools, first and foremost, you need a plan, not just hope that it will work. SROs are employees of the police department. Historically, this excuses their lack of knowledge in child development, child psychology, and sound student management systems. Knowledge we require of almost all other staff working in schools, making high-level decisions about a student's behavior. How can we require this of our SROs after minimal training? How will you ensure that this district takes seriously trauma-informed training and uses this as a basis for retention? To date, I understand that a good bit of training is coming from the National Association of School Resource Officers. Is this an unbiased, deeply-committed source of training, or one that serves more to protect the officer? How will you ensure and record required weekly check-ins with school social workers, counselors, and psychologists? You need to be able to guarantee their ability to collaborate. How will you do this? Data shows that our school staff, who provide health and mental health services to our children, not only improve the health outcomes of those students, but also improve school safety. We see the 1.3 million that the district has spent on these social supports, and we wonder why stop there. Why can't we use some of this proposed 300-plus thousand for even more social supports? Why are we asking police officers to be counselors? Why not just hire more counselors? So, Peggy, Brenda, Ruth, John, Jennifer, Ann, Paul, Tori, as you sit here tonight, I ask you not to approve this contract until you have documented a thorough and transparent process of accountability for this significant, significant investment with limited educational dollars. Stand with the history you so longingly talk about in regards to this district. Remember the power you hold and were elected to use. Thank you.
Philippe, Philippe, I'm sorry, Philippe, and Allison O'Dwyer, after that.
Is that okay? Good evening. My name is Philippe Menanto. I'm a resident of Urbana. I'm here tonight to spread my concern with the proposal to quadruple the police presence in our schools, and to ask this board to postpone a vote until a transparent and research-based discussion that includes the relevant community groups can be carried out. I hope that the board sees this as an opportunity to lead, to make effective policy, to exercise critical thinking, and not to rubber-stamp another proposal that shows on their desks. I also hope that you, Paul, and Ann, can use this as a fantastic opportunity to fulfill the commitment to transparency, accountability, and social justice that you make to voters only last spring. I'm a strong supporter of, and advocate of, the dual-language program in Urbana, and I see it as a wonderful example of how to integrate immigrant communities. However, I'm sad to report that I've witnessed a sharp decline in the notices, minutes, and other official notes coming from the districts that are translated into Spanish and French. I've often heard board members praise the program, even call it the crown jewel. But this war seems empty, as we keep, by design, I'll keep making our institutions opaque, and in the process, excluding many voices. So, this is my small effort to make our system slightly less opaque. Buenas noches. Estoy aquí para expresar mi preocupación y mi profunda oposición a la propuesta presentada por la superintendenta, Dr. Jennifer Ivory Tatum, que ha sido aprobada por la alcaldesa de Urbana, Diane Merlin. Esta propuesta tiene como fin el cuadruplicar, sí? Esta propuesta tiene como fin el cuadruplicar, si escucharon bien, cuatro veces, el número de policías presentes en las escuelas en Urbana. Como ya ha pasado muchas veces, la Junta Escolar de Urbana parece estar lista para votar y aprobar esta propuesta sin consultar a la comunidad, y como de costumbre, con muy poca transparencia y en el proceso sin una discusión abierta. Este es un proceso opaco destinado a marginalizar las voces en desacuerdo. El trabajo de los miembros de la junta escolar es proponer políticas, ejercitar el pensamiento crítico, usar la información disponible basada en investigación sólida, y con esta tomar decisiones y liderar el distrito escolar. Desafortunadamente, la Junta Escolar de Urbana otra vez parece ser nada más que un grupo de individuos que no quiere pensar por sí mismo, que no propone sus propias ideas, que solamente reacciona cuando hay problemas, y vemos que parece estar dispuesto a aceptar sin discutir o disentir la propuesta que la administración les manda a su escritorio. En Urbana, somos bastante los que nos oponemos. La semana pasada le mandamos una carta a todos los miembros de la junta, que está firmada por más de 65 miembros de nuestra comunidad, que se oponen a esta expansión policial. Esta carta apunta a la extensa investigación y multitud de estudios que afirman que agregar policías no ayuda a solucionar los problemas de disciplina en las escuelas. Hasta ahora, la junta no ha acusado recio de nuestra carta o dado respuesta alguna. A muchos nos parece que sería mucho mejor gastar el más de un cuarto de millón de dólares propuesto anualmente en recursos para el distrito, para nuestra comunidad, y no más en policías con armas dentro de nuestras escuelas. En nuestra carta le hemos propuesto a la junta escolar que este dinero sería mucho mejor invertido ayudando a los más vulnerables en nuestra comunidad, los que tienen necesidad de techo y de comida. Sabemos que hay una alta correlación entre la pobreza y la violencia. Sabemos que Urbana tiene un problema de pobreza, y no debemos seguir ignorándolo. En vez de atacar los síntomas con parches caros, con armas, y con uniformes, debemos invertir estos recursos para atacar los problemas sistémicos de pobreza, de racismo, y de violencia. Espero que se den el tiempo de pensar y usen esta oportunidad para hacer el trabajo de definir políticas que solo ustedes son los responsables de hacer. Muchas gracias.
Allison O'Dwyer, followed by Victor Font.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Allison O'Dwyer. I'm a former UHS educator. I taught at Urbana High School from 2013 to 2015. I'm a mom to two daughters who will soon enter the USD School District. And I am a concerned activist in the Champaign-Urbana community. I'm here tonight to express my concern with the proposal put forth by Dr. Jennifer Ivory Tatum and approved by Mayor Diane Marlin to quadruple the city of Urbana's police presence in our middle and high school. My concern this evening stems from research by influential and credible sources such as the CDC and peer-reviewed metadata analyses, which continually show that SROs are not the most effective method that we can employ when trying to make our schools safer. To be clear, there is an astounding body of research showing that increased police presence in schools does not lead to safer schools. This safety instead resides in developing and maintaining positive school culture. We do this through interactions with relationships with our students. By contrast, we see also from an astounding body of research that full-time officers with loaded weapons can actually serve to decrease positive school culture. These studies are readily available and were presented to this board last Thursday in the form of a letter signed by now over 70 community members. The board has yet to respond to this letter in any way. Thus, as a current school board member pointed out recently on social media, the introduction of police in our schools is indeed a controversial topic. I would therefore expect the proposal to quadruple Urbana's private school force, school police force, to be a proposal that is well-investigated and thoroughly vetted. I come before you tonight to point out two glaring issues in the proposal made publicly available, and I ask you to consider, as a board, taking more time on this vote. Issue number one, we need more data and understanding of the reasons for, and thus the role of, these police officers in our school. Issue number two, we need a better plan in place for how we will hire and evaluate these police officers. As to my first point, we are astounded that the vast majority of sources given as evidence for why we need more officers in our schools actually comes from officers themselves. We've seen in the study session on November 5th that the vast majority of speaking time was given to the current SRO and other police representatives. We see in the proposal that large portions of the evidence given as to why we need more SROs actually comes from the National Association of SROs. Are we concerned about bias here? Are we willing to seek out and listen to more voices, or have we made up our minds already? Something that could sincerely improve this proposal would be any data from the last 25 years of having an SRO in our schools. Where is this data? Why are we not seeing it used to strengthen our argument for more SROs? As for my next statement on waiting until we have better plans in place, we present to the board this 2014 document from the Unit Four SRO Evaluation Committee. I have copies for each one of you. Here we see the emphasis on the involvement of multiple stakeholders in the review process. Do we have a plan in place similar to this for USD? Will we involve and listen to the voices from students, parents, restorative practice experts, and our school's social supports? Do we plan to hear these voices in the selection and hiring of these officers? What is, excuse me, what is our plan to evaluate these officers? And are we comfortable relying on training for these officers resting mainly from the National Association of School Resource Officers? How will we know when we have enough school resource officers? Will we need them in our elementary schools? When will we know that we have reached an effective amount? Lastly, what types of data records will these officers be required to maintain? How will this become publicly available? So again, I come before you tonight with great concern about this proposal and with a request to pause on this issue to make space for more voices to be heard. I lastly encourage this board to read and accept as valid, rigorous, peer-reviewed research on this topic. Thank you for your time this evening.
Victor Font, followed by LaShonda Cunningham.
Hello.
I'm not used to using your last name, Bartalmas.
That's all right. No worries. Hi, everyone. My name's Victor, and I'm a former Urbana High School student. I'll be graduating this year with a degree in material science and engineering from the University of Illinois, but I'm not here to talk about myself or to use my perceived success to make a case in favor of the Urbana school system. I would like to thank everyone in the community who has worked tirelessly to rally support against this resolution, which seeks to add more police officers to my former high school, which, as others have outlined, serves no other purpose than sending more kids straight from school into jail. However, I'm not here to appeal to your goodwill, or to your common sense, or to your logical reasoning, as others who are better equipped than me have done that. All I can do is, based on my experience, condemn not just this resolution, but this public school system, which is designed to only allow a few students, such as myself, to succeed while condemning others to failure. For I have never seen, ever, as much injustice and so normalized as the one that I saw in my high school, in this education system. They say that there has been an increase in violence at Urbana. Violence. Since we're discussing the topic of violence, and obviously there is a general concern for spending our tax money on remedying it, violence, in my opinion, is the fact that one out of three Urbana High School students lives under poverty. That is violence. Violence is the fact that 22% of youth in Champaign-Urbana are food insecure, and the only food that they get to eat is whatever that is which is served in the cafeteria. That is violence. Violence is the fact that North Urbana students, majority black, from Fifth and Hill, have experienced high levels of aggressive cancer and bleeding disorders because of amorous untreated toxic waste since its closure in 1950s. That, ladies and gentlemen, from the Urbana School District, is the kind of violence against our students that we should be worrying about. Violence is also, and I'm sorry to say this, but violence is also the segregated school system which I am a product of. In Urbana, there are those of us who had the luck to be born in wealthier or slightly wealthier families, children of professors and such. We were given an advanced earlier education, and their parents always had the resources and the time to help guide us with studying. On the other hand, we have those who simply did not have that luck, who did not have the extracurricular help which is required to succeed in the current academic model. Because folks are at work, trying to get through multiple jobs just to pay basic food and rent, and doing whatever it takes to help their family stay afloat. I'm not making this up. I'm speaking of friends and colleagues that I had in Urbana High School. And one would think that the role of this education system would be then to educate all of those kids. Instead, it divides those of us with resources and those of us without resources. And I'm sorry, but this is effectively, whether or not this is intentional, this is effectively what this education system is doing. I want to say, again, the advanced prep versus regular curriculum serves to segregate students based on their previous knowledge. It so happens that when I first moved to Urbana, I was briefly placed into some of those regular level classes before I was moved up into the advanced ones. Coming from an international perspective, I can say safely that there is nothing regular about those classes. The academic level in them is way below standards, international standards, whereas the advanced prep is simply at that level. And let me just say that even as a product of the advanced prep path, I often found myself lacking and having a more difficult start at college than my peers. So I ask you, what is even the role of high school education if not to provide equal quality education to everyone in this community? On top of denying that equal quality education to under-resourced kids, you kick them out of school for whatever incidents that could otherwise be mediated by school professionals. Not only that, but now you want to increase police presence in high school in order to make the school-to-prison pipeline even more pronounced than it already is? And let's not forget about the $47 million plan for the jail expansion that Urbana city officials are planning to do. It would all seem as if the city of Urbana is more interested in sending kids to jail than providing a proper public education, which is your job. Let me just finish off by saying that this is not the teacher's fault. I want to make this clear. They do the best they can with the lack of resources that's being provided to them, many of which have already been outlined by other people, and I don't need to go over again. So it's a matter of resources, but it's also a matter of intent. As it stands, and unless you start proving otherwise, it is pretty clear that the intention is not to educate these kids. You would rather have kids kicked out of school, in which they are not learning much anyways, and be thrown in jail. It seems you would rather maintain the financial interests of the prison industrial complex and the military industrial complex, because, let me say, even if those students succeed in overcoming these obstacles that are being put in place for them, they still won't be able to afford the 20,000-plus tuition at a public university such as the University of Illinois. So let me ask, why are you scared of these kids growing up to become educated? That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is LaShonda Cunningham, and I am a parent of two twin boy and girl students at Urbana High School. I just want to paint a quick picture for you. I emailed the board today to express my concern of not funding additional SROs in the school system. My son, our son, was bullied in middle school four years ago, and I can honestly say that the number of times he was physically hit, verbally taunted, on a day-in and day-out basis, not only affected us as a household, but him going to school. Had we had additional resource officers in the school system at that time, my concern would not be as it is today. Yes, we've had several incidents that have happened over the last year, but do you see what's happening in Urbana with our youth? If there is a bullet found in the restroom, there are guns in the school. I can guarantee you that. You're saying that one resource officer between middle school and high school is sufficient? It's not sufficient, not even just the number of incidents that continue to take place, especially in the middle school. Now, you're willing to approve a portion of that funding for some SROs, but you're not willing to, and I understand it's taxpayers' dollars, it's my taxpayer dollar as well. However, are we willing to put a price tag on the safety of our kids, of our teachers, who have to step in when there's not a resource officer available, continuing to get hurt, continuing to take medical leave, continuing to pay workers' comp claims? Are we willing to continue to pay salaries of predecessors and spend that amount of money for that and put a price tag on our, safety of our kids? I ask you to really, really think about that. I know a lot of these kids. I know a lot of these families. This didn't just start. I'm a alum of Urbana High School as well. 28 years ago, it was in the school system then. Do you go into the schools every day? Do you visit the schools when all this is happening and a teacher needs help? A lot of you, I don't know, but I ask you and I challenge you to do so. It's happening every day. It's happening outside in the community. It goes into the schools. It didn't just start. So I ask you to consider quadrupling resource officers, one in each school, for the safety of the students, the teachers. And so if you don't want to continue it five years from now, think about it for at least two years, and let's see what happens. My current study and my dissertation is about interracial bullying, what happens in there, within the specific phenomena of those students. And research has proven it's not just mental health illness. It's about the environment that also comes into the school system. Thank you.
While Michael's taking a seat, I need to recognize him and thank him for running the cameras tonight, which I failed to do at the beginning of his session. So, Michael, thank you, along with Austin Pontius, who's helping tonight. And also, while we're at a little bit of a break, if you wish to address the board tonight, please fill out a goldenrod sheet and turn it in to our recording secretary. Michael, go ahead. Thank you.
All right. I'm Michael Tassin. I'm a current student of Urbana High School. So I've noticed, as I've been over there, listening through the various addresses that have been given, that the people who have been in favor of the SROs have been emphasizing the ways in which school has gotten more dangerous for students, for teachers, over the past several years. And I could talk about their proposed solution and how I think it's inhumane, how the students who are engaged in violence are ultimately just people that are deserving of compassion, but I don't think that's what we need to be talking about. I think we want to stay on the concern of safety. I think that's the most important thing to think about. And the people who have, well, the people who have brought up, who have been in favor of the SROs, have mentioned how things have gotten more dangerous, but I have not heard any mention of... But I have not heard any mention of how SROs would make things safer. And I've done some somewhat extensive research on this, and there doesn't seem like there's data to back that up. I'm not aware of any peer-reviewed studies suggesting that SROs make schools safer. If there are those studies, I know for a fact that there are methods that do a better job without just sending kids to prison, you know? So, really quick, I want to go through a timeline of the last two years. So at the start of the year, we entered into the year, we were missing a lot of the staff that we had had in the previous, in the 2017 to 2018 year. And that, you know, I hadn't used a lot of those staff, a lot of those, a lot of that social support. I hadn't needed it. I was always going to be fine, but that did have an impact on a lot of the other kids who needed them more. Later that year, we had what's been classified, in February, we had what's been classified as a riot. So, we talked about SROs then. We said, like, maybe if we put some more police in schools, it'll keep us safe. So, yesterday, there was another fight in the lunchroom that I walked in on. So, the SIs were there. They broke it up. They did as good of a job as they could have done. The SRO did not get there until maybe five minutes later, after everyone was gone. But the effect that they do have, because I'm unaware of any fights that have been broken up by SROs, only follow-ups where students have been punished through that system. But the effect that they do have is that students are, feel more unsafe. They are, there are men with guns whose job is to violently take them away to a cage if they break the rules in the school. And that doesn't create an environment where they're able to rely on the services that are available. The already meager resources that we have are limited even further because of the oppositional relationship that having police in the school creates between students and administration and staff. So, I'll just close with, I guess, a quote, an MLK quote that I think relates to this, which is, "A riot is the language of the unheard."
Brian Dolanar, followed by Ricardo Diaz.
Good evening. I'm Brian Dolanar. I am a 15-year resident of Urbana-Champaign. I'm a local writer and community activist, and also a parent. I have a little boy in Lille in second grade, who just turned eight this weekend. And so I'm speaking as a community member, as an advocate, and also as a parent. I want to remind folks that Urbana was the first school to desegregate in Illinois. That this move to implement cops in schools, and I refuse to use these euphemisms, this represents a step backwards for our history. And is an effort to resegregate an already deeply segregated community. In recent years, I'm very well familiar with efforts to implement restorative justice, racial justice efforts in the schools. The leadership has been undermined, moved out, and replaced by current leadership, which I've heard good things about, but I'm very disappointed to hear of this move to back Mayor Diane Marlin's proposal for cops in the schools and implement this law-and-order policy. This is a policy that's bad for black youth. It's so bad that even white folks recognize it. Continually, the disciplinary records produced to the state, they are disproportionate. Black students are 80 to 90% of those that are disciplined. This is year after year after year the case. And it's unacceptable. We know that cops will profile and discipline students, black students in particular. This is taking advantage of a situation to implement this law-and-order policy, being backed by both the mayor and the superintendent. This is bad for black youth. It doesn't advance black success. There are many other groups doing good work in this community, trying to increase excellence and success among black youth that are starving for financial support. And this effort to put forward some $300,000 is really money that is spent in the wrong direction. This is a hypocritical message to youth. Our concern apparently is that there are guns being brought into schools and that there's fighting taking place. This is a message that more guns is going to solve the problem, and more muscle is going to probably solve the problem. This is a hypocritical response. This is a gun culture, and it's clear that more guns are not solving this problem. Urbana does not want these cops in the schools. Person after person is coming up here telling y'all, Urbana does not want these cops in the schools. This is not Urbana. In Champaign, they have a history of cops in the schools, and kids keep bringing guns into the schools. Cops are not stopping the guns. We are a gun culture, and our current methods of approaching that are inadequate. I, again, am a Lille parent, and I don't want to see a situation where my white son is set up to go to college and his black friends are set up to go to prison. I want my, and I encourage every day for my white son to interact with youth of color and black and brown friends. And we have to take a real forceful stance to advocate for that because that is not what the rest of society is teaching us and teaching our youth. Again, thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for your service to Urbana. And again, Urbana is, Urbana doesn't want these cops in the schools. Thank you.
Ricardo Diaz, followed by Julie Blixen.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ricardo Diaz, and I live on Main Street in Urbana. I also like to thank you for your service, both as board members and other officials, and it takes a lot of work. And I must say, this issue brought me to a situation that I just had never been forced to. I read the budget, Ms. Baker's work and the details. It made me think quite a bit about the letter that I also signed. And so I come today with two points to make. The first one has to do with the amount of money that's being put into this, last year's budget, this year's budget. As you put it in the columns, it went from zero to a hefty amount. Living in Urbana, I understand also, knowing Brian, knowing our mayor, I also know that the need for money at the city level. But it had not occurred to me until I saw the budget that two, whatever it ends up, $300,000 very quickly. I looked at other items for $300,000 on our budget. There aren't that many, and they're personnel-based, besides the construction. It's our superintendent and assistant superintendent's salary. It's a third of every school's personnel budget. And so I thought to myself, when else would I, at my house, make such an allocation from one year to the next? And I tried to divide it up to the number of millions that you guys have to allocate and take care of, but I thought to myself, this amount of money must have a justification. It would in my house if I needed to ramp up to that level. It could be four more speech therapists, it could be five more psychologists, it could be, how else would I impact the problem with this amount of money? But it occurred to me, the most important point is that these are problems that Urbana has, whether poverty, whether it's crime, whether it's guns. It is problems that the city, our community, our neighbors, ourselves, we have. And the thing that I can't conceive of is that we would spend the money in the school rather than in the community. The city needs the money. Why should we take it from the educational budget to give it to the city? Well, because they've been providing safe police officers in the school. So that leads me to my second point. To provide and to have police officers in the school, it is very different to have a plainclothes, whether officer or other official at the school than to have a uniformed person at the school. I have had two high schoolers here in Urbana, one that is excellent in every point according to the system, and the other one that wasn't, and got in trouble. And the vice president, the vice principal called me in, and I went in and I did, you know, everything. I have a middle schooler now today. The presence of that police car at the middle school every morning makes me nervous. But a person with a gun walking around the school, do you think that one person with one gun would make a difference if there was an active shooter on the other side of the school, across, whatever? If we had five, if we had 10 people with guns in the school, would they really make a difference? Have they made a difference in all the big shootings that have happened? Personally, that's the thing that I reject the most, that there is someone walking around with a gun or sitting outside the school grounds with a gun because there are more kids with guns in the community. If there are more kids with gun in the community, if kids are being bullied, we need to take care of it for what it is, but not in the educational institution. So in my last point to tie it up is this. If we, if, the budget's already been approved, the money has already been approved. So we're not talking about the if, we're talking about the how. And I would respectfully request that we do the thinking. I worked with the Police Review Board at the city of Urbana, and before tasers came on, we had to do something of similar. We had to set up parameters, the training, the limitations, the responsibilities, the legal consequences, and especially the efficacy. Some, several people have brought up. We put a sunset to tasers if we didn't have the numbers. Why don't we do the same? Because right now, allocating $300,000 means that it's only going to go up, and it's a transfer of some money from the school to the city budget. I propose that we leave it to the school, to the city, to handle their budget, but the school that we've been taxed for to provide the education, that we do it here. And that we do it for educational purposes, not for carrying guns. Thank you.
Thank you. Eldris Melinda Carr, followed by Alan Axelrod. Did I, did I, did I skip somebody? I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Carr. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Eldris Melinda Carr. I'm on the Education Committee for the Minister Alliance of Champaign-Urbana Vicinity. Not here really to make a statement because I made a, read a statement the last time I was here on November 5th, and I handed in the information that we had, that I had read and shared with the board on that day. I just wanted to say, from the proposal to the agreement, since that hasn't been shared, because I was looking on the website, so wondering, I don't know what the vote is going to be tonight, so hadn't had a chance to really look at the agreement to see whether our questions have been integrated into the agreement. So, that's my kind of follow-up on today to say, apparently maybe that's going to be shared later or posted, and so that people will be able to see what the agreement looks like as opposed to what the proposal had in it, because I know there were probably some changes from the city council meeting to the meeting where it was put into the agreement based on our questions. Maybe it was, maybe it was not, but that's my statement here to say whether, you know, that's going to be posted at some point and whether we'll be able to have more input on the agreement. And I just wanted to also say, you know, with the shooting in California, just give a moment of silence because, you know, I know a lot of people saw that and people are hurting. Thank you.
Alan Axelrod, followed by Julie Blixen.
Hi. As stated, name is Alan Axelrod. I wanted to point out a couple of things. One is, Urbana has a marginally higher childhood poverty rate, according to the latest estimates of the American Community Survey run by the Census Bureau relative to the rest of the country, relative to Champaign, relative to Bloomington, well, relative to normal, relative to West Lafayette. So, when we're talking about the confluence of certain ways of expressing oneself or engaging in perhaps toxic masculinity-based behaviors and poverty, we should acknowledge that without actually addressing proactively the childhood poverty, and as mentioned earlier, the food insecurity. This is reactive. The other aspect that I wanted to point out is that, has the board considered what conditions would merit the future reduction in the number of SROs? Without any such definition of those conditions, this suggestion or this vote would basically be saying, we commit, without defining need, to perpetually fund this number of resource officers for. Now, I would like to propose that we plan, and in planning, we would have conditions we consider to figure out what's working, what's not, whether or not anything's needed thereafter. Because the thing of it is that even if the assessment is correct and that we need SROs now, with that hypothetical that I'm posing, that doesn't mean that we'll need them forever. And regardless of any other governmental entities, budgetary issues incentivizing certain collaborations to reduce costs, we should consider what are the needs of the kids? What are the needs of their parents? That should come first. And so in that, I urge for rigorous planning to consider when things are merited and when they no longer... when they no longer are. Thank you.
Sorry, I shuffled the papers, and I, this second time I've called you, sorry about that.
That's quite right.
Followed by Joey Melt.
Good evening, Mr. Demmett, Dr. Avery Tatum, and the members of the board. My name is Julie Blixen, I'm the Assistant Principal for Student Engagement at Urbana High School. This is my first year in the position here, as you all know, and it's been a very interesting year of learning and getting to know Urbana, and Urbana students, and Urbana families, and the Urbana community. My background before coming to Urbana is elementary education, and I think back to my own elementary school days, and elementary schools all over Urbana, all over the country. We teach our pre-K students, we teach our young kids that police are our community helpers, they are the ones that we go to when we have problems, they're the people that are there to help us when we need something. They are the ones that we go to, to ask them for help if anyone's hurt, or if they need something. And my concern is that they are still that in the schools, they are there to help our students, they are there to build relationships with students. Just because the students have gotten older, that intent has not changed. They are still people in our community that are our community helpers, that we teach our very young kids to go to for that assistance. In my time that I've been here at Urbana, I've gotten to know our school resource officer. He is there three days a week, he does split time with his detective duties, which I think can negatively impact what we are trying to do. The role of a school resource officer is to build relationships with students, to build relationships with the school family. I can share a personal example from someone in my family. My nephew, when he was a freshman, or a sophomore, and he got a new girlfriend, and she was a freshman at Champaign High School, or Champaign Central High School, Officer Brandon Thomas was their school resource officer. And they joked with him that he was going to marry them when they got married one day. Well, 10 years later, when they got married, Officer Thomas went online and became a minister to be able to co-officiate their ceremony. That's just one way that school resource officers do make a difference in the lives of children. And those officers are there day in and day out, getting to know the kids, meeting with them in the cafeteria, talking to them, sitting down and having lunch with our students. School resource officers can be there when students have things that go wrong, maybe something with their car won't start, or if they get locked out of their car, or they can help them with different things. One day this year, a new student couldn't get a hold of her dad, and they had just moved to town, and she didn't know how to get home. She knew how to get there, but didn't know the address. The school resource officer was willing to take her to her house so that she could get home, because she didn't know the way, or the bus, or anything like that. School resource officers are more than just people with guns in our schools, they're there to be that safe person if someone needs something. They are there to help make sure that students have what they need. One thing I've been incredibly impressed with Urbana is the amount of resources that we do have for mental health for our students. We have our social workers, we have our counselors, we have our clinical professionals, we have student interventionists, we have student engagement advocates. There are so many resources we are having, that this is just another additional resource that is there to help our students be successful. There's a lot of things I see our school resource officer do that I can't share, because it's confidential, but they are not just there to arrest kids. Officer McCartney has said the last thing he ever wants to do is to take a kid out of school in handcuffs. That is the very last thing that he wants to do. He is there to help kids make good decisions, to help talk to them about what they need to do with their lives, and how they can be better, and be better citizens in Urbana. And so I just wanted to share some of my thoughts with you tonight, and I want to thank you for listening. But I do believe that a school resource officer is a very important part of our school community, and having someone there full-time will give them the opportunity to build those relationships with the students that someone that's only there part-time can't do. We need someone there all the time, so that those relationships are solid. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Joe?
Happy birthday, by the way. Thank you.
Somebody else's birthday on November 19th, congratulations. Joey Melt, followed by Mitch Berenson.
Hello, good evening. Joey Melt, I'm the principal at Urbana Middle School. I'm also a parent, I have three sons that go to Dr. Williams Elementary School. My fifth grader will be at the middle school with me next year. I'm excited, I'm not sure he is, to be with me at the school. But I have a statement that I'm going to read, because I want to make sure and hit all the points, and the purpose of my speaking tonight is to speak about the daily experiences in the school, right now, right? And so a lot of the folks who have spoken this evening have all expressed really important points to consider, but very few have had direct experience day-to-day, every day, right, for the past year and a half, at least, me personally speaking, year and a half at Urbana Middle School. So I'm just going to go, and then we'll go from there. So as principal at UMS, I'm speaking on behalf of our administrative team, Dr. Micah Jackson, Mr. Patrick Russell, and Ms. Maria Elvire. I and we would like to express our feedback and support of the positive work, most recently of our school resource officer at UMS, and provide an overview of the daily experiences of the recent working relationship with the SRO at UMS. We want to highlight how our SRO has assisted in our work to teach and support students academically, socially, and emotionally. We want to be clear that we understand the concerns that have been voiced tonight from members of the community who are worried about an increase of police in the schools. We understand these issues, and the concerns related to the school-to-prison pipeline. We understand the concerns around relationships and trust or mistrust between communities and police. We understand the concerns related to persistent inequalities and equities in our schools, and working to address these issues with all of our resources and all of our school improvement initiatives. We also understand the concerns around spending money on an SRO or SROs, rather than spending money in other areas, either for additional counselors, mental health providers, et cetera. We fully acknowledge and respect all these viewpoints, this is an extremely difficult decision. We recognize the complexities around these issues, and acknowledge that this increase of SRO worries many people. So while we acknowledge all these complexities, we want to speak to what we've seen, the benefits of having an SRO full-time with us at the start of this school year, from what we've already seen, and what that could look like in the future, when we're very strategic about how an SRO works and functions in a school, from a social-emotional lens, and not just a policing lens. So our day-to-day experience thus far with SRO, Ms. Michelle Robinson, who's in the back, we want to start by saying, I want to start by saying, before I was principal at UMS, my perspective was different, I would have been saying something different tonight. My perspective has shifted as a principal, right? It shifted based on a year and a half of working on a daily basis with 1,000 students, their families, and our staff, and the complexities of running a school today. The first piece of information to discuss is that we've already seen a large decrease this year of direct police involvement with students and families, by having, partly by having a full-time SRO present who's dedicated to our students' families and school full-time. In the past, my direct experience was if an issue arise and police were requested by families, or police were needed due to a situation, and usually, or sometimes, the part-time SRO at the time was not able or available, it resulted in a different police officer responding to the school who had much less training with youth, much less training working in schools. This year, by having Officer Robinson at UMS full-time, she knows the ins and outs of the school, she knows our day-to-day policies, she knows our school code of conduct, she knows our students. This year alone has resulted in a drop in direct police contact with our youth, by having a regular school resource officer in the school every day. She's assisted us already with several DCFA cases, where students and families are asking for help. She's assisted us in getting their help that they need. She's assisted students who have come to us with concerns around drug or alcohol use, either that they are experiencing themselves as 12-year-olds, or that their family members are experiencing. She's assisted us in getting outside counseling and services set up with our school resource personnel in regards to counselors, social workers, and clinical professionals. She's done home visits to make sure families get connected to local resources. We've had several students and families come to UMS asking for her. These are families across race, racial backgrounds, across linguistic backgrounds, across socioeconomic status, and across immigrant backgrounds. She's building trust and relationships with families across difference, while fully understanding the broader context of those complexities, right? So I think it's a multi-dimensional issue that we have to really unpack. So the role of our SRO has been in tandem with, and in alignment with, our support services, including our restorative practices facilitators, our counselors, our social workers, our clinical professionals, I'm sorry. The SRO presence is not in place of or replacing mental health support, it's in tandem with it, right? I heard someone earlier say the SRO hasn't been involved in breaking up fights. We don't ask our SRO to break up fights, that's not their job, that's our job as school personnel. A couple other pieces. We also want to remind that Officer Robinson is a direct liaison with the Youth Assessment Center, which is an organization that centers on youth who need linkages to outside services, counseling, other supports, or that have had prior interaction with law enforcement. Her involvement with them ensures that supports and interventions are offered through the Youth Assessment Center, and, for example, with youth, or station adjustments, peer mediation, peer court, that are filtered through law enforcement officers to know and understand what is needed for the student inside the school and outside the school. She meets with the case manager from Youth Assessment Center weekly, with the students and families, every Thursday. So in the unfortunate event, also, if there were a school crisis in our school, one like an active shooter, her consistent presence and expertise would help us. It's not the end-all, be-all, it wouldn't solve everything, but it would help us in ensuring broader school safety for an active intruder. Last paragraph, is that okay? Okay. We definitely don't want just a police officer in our building, we don't just want a cop in our building. We don't just want an armed guard in our building. We want a school resource officer, and I believe that it's, that title is very important and intentional, who has ties to Urbana community. Officer Robinson was born and raised in Urbana, she's got two certificates of merit for going above and beyond the call of duty. She's received one life-saving award for saving the life of a 17-year-old who was overdosing. She's the mother of three, she works with Preston James with the Self-Made Kings Program with our Urbana youth. She has crisis intervention training, autism specialization training, she's a juvenile officer. Her job is specifically to look out for the needs of youth. Her oath is to intervene on behalf of youth, juveniles, even with fellow officers. She's worked as a rehabilitation specialist and top person that'll live with mental illness. She's multiracial, African-American, Native American, and white. Speaking honestly, Officer Robinson has a greater understanding of trauma-informed practices than most educators do. The position of a school resource officer is what Officer Robinson came into her profession to do. This is her dream role in her career. And so, in addition to that, last couple statements, she does risk watch, and has done risk-watch assemblies with elementary children in Urbana for the past 10 years, building on what the previous speaker spoke about. She's given rides home to students who have missed the bus, she does a variety of things, building relationships with students and families. So we understand this is a difficult decision, we thank you for your continued leadership and support as a Board of Education. As I stated before, I just wanted to share our daily experience thus far, because that's been missing in the conversation. And please know that I'm always available, we're always available for questions and conversations around what this looks like in the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Mitch Berenson. And once again, anyone that wishes to address the board, please call out a Goldenrod sheet and turn it in to Lori.
Good evening, Mitch Berenson, the principal at the high school. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I must say, being a principal of the high school is an awesome responsibility, one that I do not take lightly, and probably most importantly, the safety and well-being of the staff and students on a daily basis will weigh on anybody, and one that I take very seriously to consider. A lack of a resource officer would compromise our ability to be able to provide that safe environment, for many reasons. In 23 years in schools, I have never worked in a school, a high school, that has not had a resource officer. I must state that a resource officer is part of the school, it's not the other way around. In fact, every Thursday morning, when we meet as an administrative team, they're part of that team, they're part of that agenda. They defer to us being the resource officer, not the other way around, they work with us, they are there to support us. I have never experienced, ever, resource officers imposing their will on students or staff in any capacity. They are there to support us, and all the things that Dr. Wemelt mentioned, Mrs. Blixen mentioned, are all true, they're part of our daily interactions with the SRO. So therefore, I just want to say briefly, just state, that I strongly recommend that you consider having two full-time SROs in both buildings, because the benefits that they provide us on a daily basis, countless examples I can go into, some many are confidential, that public does not have knowledge of, and should not have to know about, is because of the work they do with us as a school. This is a partnership, not divisive in any capacity, it's about doing what's best for students, and safety, and their well-being is always should be our priority, no matter what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Anyone else wish to address the board? Please turn in Goldenrod sheet. Happen to know this individual, so I'll not wait for the sheet to get up here. Don.
Hi, John.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to first start by addressing Chief Seraphin. He knows that I'm not opposed to SROs in schools, and so I want to start there. So Chief, everything else I'm going to say, got that? I do want to fill in some blanks, though, because there's some important things that I think people should realize before the board votes to approve almost $300,000 of resources that are scarce, to fund officers in our schools. First of all, when we talk about scarce resources, we should remember that this board pushed for the approval of a central TIF district, which provides money to the city for special programs. This board said that it would negotiate with the city to determine how that money would be spent for the schools during the life of that TIF. That TIF is just a couple years old, money is already starting to pour in from that central TIF. Why isn't that money being used, rather than our tax dollars that are supporting the schools, and are supposed to be supporting academic achievement for our students? Question number one. Question number two, I do worry that the expansion of the SRO program will actually water down some of the things that Dr. Wemelt highlighted. I'm really pleased to hear that Officer Robinson is our SRO. I've had experiences with her over the years, and she's an outstanding officer, and the exact kind of person that we should have in our schools. I'm very concerned that we don't have, on our Urbana police force, that depth to quadruple the number of SROs, or the amount of SRO time in our schools, and do it well. The other thing is, I want to talk about transparency, because that was a big part of the campaign. I know, because I live in Paul's district. I was very, very aware of what Paul was saying on the campaign trail, about transparency. This board has a long way to go, when there's nothing on the website, related to the agreement, related to board policies for SROs, related to the protection of rights of students, students' Fourth Amendment rights. Because currently, under Supreme Court law, schools act in loco parentis. Therefore, Mr. Berenson can say to a cop, any cop, yes, you can question this person, he does not have to notify the parents. Unless that's in writing, I would caution you to vote for this until those kinds of policies are put in place. You're putting the cart before the horse. And if the cart's already been, if I'm wrong about that, if the horse is already out there as policy, then where is it? Why hasn't that been presented to the public? Why isn't it on the website? I want to end with this. The demographics of this district are 40% black, 38% white, around 20% Latino. The people who've spoken tonight, we had one black person speak. We had two students speak. I would like you to listen to the voices of the students of Urbana, as you're thinking about this decision. Michael and Victor said more than any of the adults up here, including myself. So I leave you with their words. Please, please consider the words of Michael and Victor before you make this decision.
We've had one more submission, Lisa Diaz. And if anyone else wishes to address the board, please... And if anyone else wishes to address the board, please fill out a Goldenrod Sheet.
Good evening. I don't have anything prepared, and I honestly didn't expect to come up here. I really came to listen and learn, and I have to say that as a parent of a middle school or in high school graduate, I have so much compassion for the issues that our young people bring to schools. We have things that desperately, desperately need attention and resource. The things that I- the only thing that I think I can add tonight to many important points that have been raised that I urge you to consider are, the thing that I'm perplexed by is, while we have this wonderful story about an SRO resource in the middle school, and I know that my son is currently benefiting from the positive climate there, as I believe many other students are, I'm concerned about a resource that has direct employment and accountability that is outside the school system. And I think that some of the other related points about where's the accountability, what's the review process, who's at the table to have input into continuing to evaluate what a successful SRO presence is and its impact, and weighing that against other like allocations of resources that might have equal or better impact on the issues that we're trying to address. These are critical issues that we need to have policies and a process in place to be critically evaluating, and I respectfully submit that. Thank you.
Thank you. One more, Sage Johnson. And if anyone else wishes to address the board, please fill out the Goldenrod Sheets.
Okay. Hey, everybody. Hi, Terry. I'd like to thank you for your student engagement meeting that you held about a month ago at the high school. I thought it was really helpful. And I also think that we need more student voice when it comes to the new cops in our I don't think that the kids at my school are aware that more SROs are being added, and I don't know how they would respond. But I also know that the best relationships that happen at my school aren't because people have been hired for positions that sound good, but because the people who are in those positions do good work. And so I can't tell you whether or not these- this extra SRO at the middle school and the extra one at the high school would do good work. But I can say that the people who are doing the best work are already there. And I think we need to, like, build on our relationships with our deans that we haven't fired for a year. I think this board for having stability in that issue at our middle and high school. I know that I did- I supported the opposite thing a few years ago, but I thank you. And I'd like to see more peace at our school, so that's just keeping everything the same.
Thank you, Sage. Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda as soon as I find it. We will have an exec session after this evening's meeting for purposes of personnel and real estate. There'll be no action following those sessions. We need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second at all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We have no public hearing tonight nor communication- I'm sorry, we do have a letter from Helen Satterfield that's making its rounds. We have an administrative report tonight on the tax levy.
Good evening. The tax levy I'm presenting tonight is no different than what we've done the last three years. Because of the hospital cases still outstanding, the board has decided in the past to do the balloon levies, so I'm recommending tonight that we continue with that. I want the public to understand, though, this is not a tax increase because we're tax capped. We are only going to be allowed to have the EAV or extension increase by CPI, which is 1.9 percent this year, plus new construction. So even though we might be levying 25 percent more of what we got last year, that is only as a safety net in case the hospitals do come back on the tax rolls. And then we would always have the opportunity to go back before the end of February and decide if how much of that we're going to take, if, you know, if the board chooses to do so. So I want to make sure that's understood. The actual hospital EAV that's out there that could be possibly coming back on is $120 million. I mean, that's a 17 percent increase over what we currently have in EAV. So it's a huge amount of money, and it's something that we shouldn't take lightly. And just for some history, the last three years, we've levied close to 28%, 29%. But the actual increase that we ended up getting was 3.25% to 4.76%. So we never get nearly as much as what we levy, so I want to make sure that's clear. So tonight, I will be just recommending that we levy 25 percent more. And again, we're going to levy this, and it will be published in the paper, so the public will know about it. And then, when we come back in December, we will actually approve the levy to be filed with the county clerk. So are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? This is in concert with what we've discussed many times. All right. We'll move on to our action items. We have a consent agenda this evening. It includes the minutes of the October 15 business meeting, the October 24 special meeting, the October 29 special meeting, the November 4 special meeting, the November 5 study session. We have bills and checks, education fund bills in the amount of $782,000. Operations and maintenance funds- maintenance fund bills in the amount of $144,000. Bond and interest in the amount of $500. Transportation fund bills in the amount of $315,000. Working cash bonds, and this is construction activity, in the amount of $76,000. Tour in the amount of $25,000. Life safety levy in the amount of $90,000. Payroll in the amount of $4.4 million. And Urbana Adult Education bills in the amount of $127,000. We have various personnel items that are relatively routine. We do have an administrative personnel item, and we have a retirement that Angie, you may want to quick mention.
Sure. We actually have a couple of retirements that, you know, we wish people could just work forever. So Angela Wyatt at Thomas Paine is retiring in December, and Ms. Wyatt's been with us for twelve and a half years, and so she's finishing up at Thomas Paine this December. She'll continue to do her holiday performance, and she has been in education for about 27 years. And one of the highlights is that she's been very fortunate to have kids continue on professionally in dance, drama, and theater. Many kids in Urbana has a history of having several students excel in the fine arts, and so she's very proud to have that lasting impact. And then we have Chris Vowles, who's retiring as principal Urbana Early Childhood in June. And so she's also said that she's very fortunate to work with such high-quality people in the district that are dedicated to do the right thing. She plans to spend time with family while advocating for children. Hopefully, she might maybe sub for us a little bit for administrators. So she hasn't agreed to that, so maybe I thought if I said it on camera, she'd say she had to do it. Anyways, so there's a couple retirements that we wanted to give a special shout-out to this evening.
All right. We have new activity account- continuing on with the consent agenda. We have new activity accounts for UHS Cheer Competition Team, UHS Life Skills Coffee Shop, and UHS Wrestling Athletic Fund. We have a resolution authorizing and directing sale or disposal of property, which has to do with stale books at the King Library. That is the consent agenda for the evening. Is there a motion?
I move acceptance of the consent items as read.
And I forgot to ask if anyone wants any item removed from consent agenda. I apologize. All right. Peggy's motion is on the floor for a second.
A second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Poloski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes.
Yes.
Vice President Hall.
Yes.
And President Cymon.
Yes. Motion is carried. We do have gifts this evening. Would anybody like to read the gifts?
I'll read them, sure.
Go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Arbor Management donated 50 hot dogs, buns, and packs of chips, along with apples and oranges to Urbana Early Childhood School in support of a parent activity for the Purple Village. A-plus mechanic Champagne donated $750 to the Urbana High School Boys Basketball Program. Paul and Katrina Wethel, Urbana, donated $100 to Urbana Middle School Activity Account. Jim and Janet Gallaszewski, I hope I pronounced that right.
Galaszewski.
Galaszewski, yeah, I apologize for that. Urbana donated $1,310.10 to the Urbana High School Swim and Dive Program. Donald Walden, Urbana, donated $200 to Urbana High School Student Senate. Michelson Kane and Christine Kuhn. Michael- Michelson Kuhn and Christine Cox each donated $100 to Urbana High School Academic Booster Club. Urbana High School received an anonymous donation of 10 winter coats. The West Urbana Neighborhood Association donated $600 to Urbana High School. The following donated to the Evelyn Burnett Underwood Music Assistance Program at Urbana Middle School. Barbara Babic, Urbana, donated BB Jupiter clarinet. Tom and Brenda Kester, Urbana, donated a Yamaha trumpet.
Is there a motion to accept the gifts and send? Thank you.
Some of them.
Moved in second at all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. We're now ready for our discussion about our intergovernmental agreement with the City of Urbana, between the City of Urbana and Urbana School District. I'd like to note that Chief Seraphin is here this evening, if there's any questions for the chief. And why don't you come forwards, because I think there's going to be some questions. I've just been handed a note that says that you wanted to make a few statements before we got started.
Yes. Just had a couple of brief comments to make as we begin the discussion tonight. This is the third time I've got to be up here before you guys. So, and so I just wanted to mention that, again, this is something that has been an open process. The other thing I wanted to mention, I guess two other things, this is a joint proposal. This clearly is not the school district going one way and the police department going the other way. This has been described multiple times tonight as the word partnership, and I think that is absolutely an accurate description. There was also some discussion with regards to the money, and I recognize there's a lot of- there's a lot in there. One of the things I did want to make sure that was clear in there was that, indeed, this is a- an ongoing thing, and we had a, not a sunset, but this is a two-and-a-half-year agreement. So I wanted to make sure that that was- that was clear as well, so that if indeed something, we need to rework things, we can rework things. And that money that goes there, that's not just occasionally, we think of just salaries, but when it comes to police, there's all sorts of things that we're- we have to buy to make sure that they are equipped to do their job. So there is equipment that's part of that that's been annualized in there. I think we discussed that last time. In addition, that, like I said, the city is, of course, pushing up the front end of that money for those annualized pieces of equipment. So when it comes to the total package, the city is, I guess, starting out on that end, so that as the school district annualizes those payments over time, they're ready to buy the second piece of equipment, but the city is willing to provide the first. And finally, tonight, I heard many times, sitting in the back, a phrase called the school-to-prison pipeline. And so with regards to that, we have prepared a little bit of data that I think you might find interesting. So as not to go back over too far back, we went back five and a half years. And in that time, that covered essentially, for those who've met, SRO Matt Bain through SRO Jeff Steinberg up to SRO Darren McCartney now, and then I guess this would also include time from Officer Robinson. It's five and a half years. In five and one-half years, we have made technically 35 arrests of- by the SRO for school-related incidents on school property. Two of those were notices, two appeared in court later as sort of a citation, one city and one for a state charge. So 33 custodial arrests. Of those 33, 24 went to the Youth Assessment Center. And I think Principal Weemel explained that a little bit, but 24 of those 33 were there. Either they were a direct referral by a transport by the police, or sometimes we might take someone home and then make that referral later. So 24 of those were directly. That leaves nine. Of those nine that were transported to the juvenile detention center, two campuses, five and a half years, nine went to the juvenile detention center. Six of those arrestees, upon further review of their matter, were referred to the Youth Assessment Center. That leaves three. One was charged by the state's attorney's office, one was no charged by the state's attorney's office, and one is still pending. No students were sentenced to the Illinois Department of Juvenile Justice or the Illinois Department of Corrections, as they were over 18, in five and a half years. As a matter of fact, 30 of 33 percent- 30 of 33, 91 percent were referred to the Youth Assessment Center for services. So I hope that maybe paints a picture in the last five and a half years, sort of what the- what our data showed. Those are the remarks I wanted to make. I know we've been before you on October 1st and then November 5th, so at this point, I'll just sit quietly and prepare to answer questions as they come.
Thank you for getting that information. I'm just curious on how you came up with two and a half years for the agreement instead of, you know?
Because I think we were trying to- we thought we would do this year as sort of, I guess, a partial year because we've- we haven't gotten this fully instituted, so we're calling this the first half year. Feel free to correct me, Dr. Avery Tatum, and then two years beyond, this sort of first partial year. By the time the superintendent was able to sort of get situated and we got rolling, the school year was upon us.
I think we wanted it to be five semesters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And we wanted the opportunity to not do a five-year, right? We wanted to be able to come back if there are things we want to tweak or change or gives us the opportunity to review that in two and a half years.
Right, or possibly go down to a lesser amount. With the current SROs, if we agreed to this, would they still be in place, or would we have an- a procedure like our audience citizen statements had said? Would they have a chance to interview how it's going for right now? And I know it's a half a year, so it would be kind of different this year, so.
So what would happen here in this one, as I've said before, you might remember, I have a pile of blue suits that are driving patrol cars, and we would go and select this person from that pool. When we did that with- we did that back in August, when Officer Robinson was selected, and that was with input we had, I don't remember exactly the number, but middle school staff were at the table with police supervisors to make the work together, to interview and make that selection. So that's how it was done this past August. And we would envision a similar process for the high school SRO, should this pass.
Okay, great. Thank you. I do think it's important to include some of our UHS staff and administrators for this position. Thank you.
Other board members wish to- this is not just a question and answer with the chief, it's discussion amongst ourselves.
Well, I have one quick question for the Officer Seraphin, but then I do have- I'd like to share my position as well. Of the 35 arrests in the last five and a half years, how many of those were last February?
I don't- I'm not sure. It's probably, I don't know unless the chief serves knows. It's about nine or 10 or something like that. But I'm not exactly sure which of those were actually arrested at the school versus they might have gone and scooped up one or two at home or some other place.
Okay. Yeah, I thought there was about 10. Yeah, 10 of 35, so a third of them, almost a third of them. Yeah, thank you. That's important. Right, well, the incident, yes, at the school.
Score related, yes.
So, sorry.
Peggy, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I guess I'd like to focus, as we've had, this is our third public discussion on the, the issue of the SRO. And I, so I kind of want to focus us on what I think the real question is, because we are in agreement that SROs provide some value to our district. We've heard that time and again. There's no, that's not the question. To me, the question to us is what's a reasonable increase in the SROs in our district at this time? For twenty-six years, we've had a halftime SRO in the district and have had largely a positive climate in our schools. That positive climate is a result of investments we made in our professional educators, our teachers, our counselors, our social workers, as well as investments in effective administrators and systems of support. The fact that we've had a positive climate in our district without relying on armed police officers, as many other districts do, is a source of pride, something I'm quite proud of. We know what contributes to a positive school climate. And in my view, we took our eyes off that prize last year when we dismantled systems of support and removed key personnel without proper planning. That misguided approach contributed to the tumult that we experienced in our high school and middle school last year. Community violence, including easy access to guns, has sadly been with us for many years. We in Urbana understand that effective relationships between students and education, educational persons, professionals create the kind of safe zone where community violence doesn't spill over into our schools. Last February's serious fight was an anomaly, one that I believe could have been prevented. If we quadruple the number of SROs, we will lock ourselves into a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar annual expense for two and a half years, drawing down our education fund, which has been spending more money than we've been taking in for some time now. Doing so will most certainly lead, in my view, to critical staff reductions in the years ahead. Quadrupling the number of SROs is a radical departure from our decades-long approach to armed police officers in our schools, and in my view is an overreaction to the events of last year. I support doubling our SRO presence, employing one full-time SRO to be shared by UHS and UMS. That's a reasonable increase at this time. We can always scale up our use of SROs if that is warranted. But let's not take our eyes off the prize again. It is our education professionals, our teachers, our counselors, our social workers, not armed police officers who create the, the safe and supportive conditions that we value in our schools.
Other board members? Ruth Ann?
I, uh, wasn't here for our last, uh, board meeting. So I've had to, um,
Speak up so that makes sure we can.
So I've had to, uh, do some more thinking and, and whatever else. Um, I'm not for this proposal. The, the amount of mon- money is mind-boggling, I get it, and the city is doing budget, budget cuts. And when I look at these figures and try to reconcile it in my mind of pars- parceling this out and making this, the easiest way I can do this is I'm cutting this in half and I'm looking at two positions that we are creating in our school district at this amount of money for each, and when do we ever do that? It's just, when do we ever do that? We don't even start teachers off at these salaries. And that bothers me greatly. And I'm doing my best to keep myself calm about this. Maybe I just don't get it. I'm not sure, but th- this is too much money right now. We have not studied it. I was gonna come here and discuss about studying, and there were very, very many people that came to the mic asking about, where is the study? I come with a note down here talking about a committee. We, we love our committees. We love spending time and months on end getting input, giving the feedback, and studying things like this when we are going to be spending this amount of money. And we have not done that. We've had a couple of open meetings, and that's been it. And to me, I'm getting the feeling that we just have to jump on this immediately. And I kind of think we don't need to do it that way. I'm kind of half-thinking that, okay, we've started this year off and so on and so forth, we need to complete this year. I don't want to add anything else above and beyond what we're doing right now while we sit down and we study this. And we come up with some ideas, and we bounce stuff off of each other the way we like to do in being transparent about all this. I'm just not comfortable with this at all, and the other, another part of this that I keep thinking about also is a lot happened last year. I'm very on board with everything that Peggy just said, totally. And we have not started this year by assessing where we are with our interventionists. And at this moment, do we need to be doing more? Do we need to be doing less? And where are they on the bu- uh, you know, where are we at on the budget with that? Do we need to cut back? Do we need to put more in? And then what do we do about this SRO? Increase or decrease? We haven't talked, I, I don't believe, we've talked about that, and I'm sorry, I could not make it, family was more important a couple of weeks ago. It's been said several times about people are worried about the guns. As long as it stays holstered and nothing is going on, you should not have to worry about your gun, a gun being on property. Don't walk up and grab it because you're gonna get slammed to the floor in a, in split second if you lay hands on an officer and you're going for their, their duty weapon. So is there a learning curve that we've got to deal with, with our students? To understand what a gun really is? It's on, my idea is it's holstered and it's on its safety. And it's on the person that knows how to use it properly. And that's what everybody needs to understand. It's just not willy-nilly, let's pull it out of the holster and throw it to the sky and do all this other stuff like the cowboys do and show it off. That's not what's gonna be walking up and down the hallways just to throw that out. And of course, I'm, my mind's always all over the place because there's just all kinds of bits and pieces that I want to try and hit on. I just want us to try and put this on hold, put the brakes on a little bit because I, I just cannot vote for this, and I hope that we vote it down and virtually try and rewrite this real, real quick. Make one person extend it out to the end of the year while we send this to a committee to take care of this. Uh, there's one other thing that I need to add to it. Uh, one of my grandchildren started kindergarten in Tennessee this school year. It's a pre-K through fifth grade country, not country, county, school district with SROs in the building. That was different for me to fi- find out. There's actually, somebody has been in the building all these years, and they're starting at pre-K. If we want to look at this as a good thing of growing up, I mean, starting at the bottom and growing up in age with somebody in the school, and then it will be the norm. And it won't be this big, ugly, evil thing that it's being presented as, as some people feel. And I don't know where I'm at with this, totally. So if we study this, we need to look at a big picture and not just be pointed with middle schoolers and high schoolers. This could be something that we start from peak, pre-K and go on up for the next many years that we still have, because this, this district isn't gonna die off anytime soon. So we need to discuss what our, uh, and it's been said, the review. We don't have some stuff in there on when we're gonna do it, what committee's gonna be assigned to do this, so on and so forth, and if it is a committee type of, of work, so on and so forth. But right now, my biggest concern is, uh, is for us to evaluate the systems that we have in our buildings now with our SIs and our SEAs and see where we are with that. Really get a study done, has it been effective or not? Is there something on the surface that we are only supposed to see and we're not seeing the dark underbelly of it? I need to know these things. I need to be the good steward of the taxpayers' money for which I was elected to do. Since nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine, a lot has changed in this school district. So I am only saying, and I'd like to encourage my fellow board members to please vote down this proposal and take it back to the drawing board after we do a little bit of something, something to it.
So, um, I was gonna address only one thing because I know other board members want to speak. Um, I did want to just address your very first point, Ruth Ann. I know we talked about this at the last meeting, and I know you had a family emergency, so you weren't able to be here. Um, but in our Exhibit A that we shared at the last meeting during our discussion, uh, their salaries are not actually this amount. So that amount includes, um, forty-six percent pension. I joked with, uh, Chief Seraphin about, uh, the pension and insurance that our, our police officers are very well, uh, uh, compensated for, and they deserve it because they put their lives on the line every day. Um, so including, uh, pension, insurance, benefits, workers' comp, vacation leave, FICA, um, their salaries. And this was, again, we don't actually know who we're gonna hire because that's gonna be a very open process. The chief has, you know, a large pool of people that we'll choose from. Um, but the salary that we use to average was, um, thinking in case we took like a ten-year, um, employee. So for a ten-year, um, longevity UPD officer, the salary that we're, we're thinking we might be around an average is seventy-four thousand. Um, the rest of this includes all those other things. Um, so about fifty-one percent of that large number is pension, insurance, benefits, workers' comp, FICA, vacation. So I just wanted to clarify, and I think, uh, Medicare and some other things, maybe that I'm missing that we discussed last time. Training. Um, and the chief has already outlined equipment and some of those recurring costs, but I just wanted to address that, that large number that you talked about at the beginning, salary and benefits, that is not all salary. So I just wanted to say that out loud.
Lot of money regardless.
Yep.
I am starting to look at this a little bit harder because vest guns and gas masks and helmets are, are all on there. And let's make sure. I, I understand that, and other people are gonna see this, so can you explain, are we actually saying that the school district is buying guns for the SROs?
So we discussed that, but I'm gonna let the chief answer that.
Yeah, so certain bits of equipment, when we decided to begin this discussion, um, earlier this year, we would decide to say, what are those concrete things that we buy? So we buy a new handgun for the officers every ten years. So one tenth of that amount goes into this pool. And then certain other things, um, that, that were listed in there go into that, and so that's annualized out. Like I said, the city's gonna front all of that initially to make this, to hopefully get this off the ground and going. And so that when the second gun in ten years is ready and we go to, back to the, this police, well, not me, but somebody goes to the police supply store and they go to buy these things, that they'll have all those funds set up to the, so that this officer would be equipped to do, God forbid, not necessarily, there's another issue at, uh, the, the U of I quad or wherever else that something like that could happen, the officers would be equipped. So that's, yeah, all of that equipment, and that's annualized out over the course, uh, over the lifetime.
Other board members?
I had a quick question. If we're actually employing the SROs, would they still be pulled away to do detective work for you?
No.
Okay.
If they were part-time, they would.
So under the current model, yes, that, that does happen.
Right, I understand.
In this particular case, no, they would be, I mean, barring, uh, I, I think the example, in nineteen ni- April nineteen ninety-six tornado, um, maybe perhaps in that very, every twenty, ten years, there might be something that would be, holy cow, we have to do something different. But no, they would be assigned to the schools, for the schools, for the youth.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Other board members?
Um, I've been asking a lot of questions of our administration, and I was at the high school last week and the middle school this week, and I've been trying to listen to staff and everybody, and, um, I, I did, as was pointed out, campaign on a platform of transparency and listening to my constituents. I've been trying to do that. I've also been trying to do due diligence with research. And I'm, I am surprised when I was doing searches over the weekend about, um, data about the effect on, of school resource officers on schools. There was less hard data about how they're beneficial, which I thought, I mean, maybe I need to do a deeper dive, but there was less on that than there was negatives about them being involved in schools. So it was tough for me to get a completely equal set of data. But one thing that stood out to me that was really interesting was that, um, one study showed that increased SRO presence, and I have to preface this too, I'm sorry, get ahead of myself. I, I really believe fully in all of the positive things that SROs do for our schools. And everything that has been said in the prior meetings by Tori, by other people, I think that they are a force for good if with our kids, and they are not your standard cops who go out, uh, on the weekends in the middle of the night to do drug busts and deal with people under the influence. They are not that [inaudible]. They are really well-trained for kids, and that I appreciate. But this one number that jumped out at me was that an increase in SRO presence can actually lead to higher levels of mid-range, uh, infractions like smoking or, you know, marijuana in the school, things like that, and some minor physical aggressions. It's an increase. I don't know what drives that, maybe it's, I don't, I have no idea. There was a, the lessening of felonious infractions was actually the result of higher levels of academic interventions. That really made me stop and have to reread the paragraph again to make sure that I read what I thought I read. And we spent a lot of time, we spent a lot of time and resources putting all of these support staff in our schools to increase our students' academic achievement, to help their SEL, um, in tandem with that. And so then, coupled with the paperwork that we got on the breakdown of all of the roles and responsibilities of all of the new staff that we've just hired over the past year, which we hastily assembled, I have to admit. We hastily assembled it and did not completely understand exactly where everybody's role was going to fit. I think we are still working on that. And so when I see those numbers, and I remember in twenty eighteen when I asked, can we please slow down on this decision to get rid of the deans? And I asked, can we please be slow, and, I, not me, all of us did. We said, can we be slow and deliberate about how we go about instituting a new system of discipline for our schools? That was a hard battle. And we're at year one. We're at really fully year one of getting data collected because we finally are understanding what everybody's doing. But there's still a lot of overlap in people's roles on this, on this breakdown of, of staff. Lot of overlap, I heard from both schools, that there are parts of, um, our student support that is not being handled the way it should be, whether it's manning the doors to the schools so that outsiders are getting in, people are still coming into the People are still coming into the schools that aren't supposed to be there. Um, or if it's down to, you know, breaking up fights, things like that. I think there's ways we can shore that up. But I don't know, because we haven't given it time to see how it's working. And so, when I and others sat here in twenty eighteen and said, please slow down, I have to be consistent with what I said then and what I'm going to say now, which is, please slow down. I, I do believe, I agree with Ruth Ann a hundred percent that we need to do due diligence on this. I want to make sure that we're allocating these funds exactly the way they need to go. But more importantly, that we're serving our kids the way we promised we would serve them. And I, I know we're seeing positives already from the, the professionals who are in there now, working with our kids, but they haven't been given enough time. And I know that a lot of them are the ones asking us for this support. And it's not because I don't trust them in their jobs. I know they're working very hard, and I know they're very good at what they do. Like Sage said, they're excellent at what they do. I agree with that. I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And I agree with Peggy that there's nothing wrong with waiting a year and then adding another person if we feel that it's warranted. But as one person pointed out, that three hundred thousand then is locked in. And I don't want to trivialize this by just saying it's all down to money and, and putting a price on our children's safety. I don't, because I, all, my kids have gone to school, I still have a student there, and I ask him every day, how are things going at school? How are you feeling safe? Are you, you know, asking him and his friends about SROs and things. I want to know what kids think. So, I just want to be cautious. I want to be consistent. And I do believe that our discipline has gotten better, and our students' behavior has gotten better. And I, you know, we don't know, it's too early to tell what that's attributed to. There's so many factors that went into it. So, in good conscience, I can't just say, let's continue to just react and spend more time and energy on something when I was in disagreement with that last time around.
Other board members? I'm prepared to talk when you guys are done, but go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, John.
I apparently have not researched this as deep as all the rest of you did. But, um, I do want to start out by saying that, uh, I have people that I greatly respect, um, on both sides of this, uh, uh, discussion. Um, and, uh, so, I've, uh, listened very, very carefully to what, uh, everyone has had to say. Um, I'm troubled by a few things. I think the history of this community and the history of Urbana is not being, and the Urbana Police Department is being given short shrift. Um, I've been in this community, uh, for, um, starts in nineteen sixty-seven, and I was in the community three years, uh, as a, as a youth. So, let's start from nineteen sixty-four till now. So, what is, what is, that's about sixty years. Um, and, um, maybe a little bit more. And, um, the Urbana Police Department has never been, uh, considered a, uh, an aggressive, uh, police department. First couple of years I lived here as a student, I was on the champagne side. Nineteen sixty-eight, rough time, rough, rougher than now, being a police officer, uh, and being a member of the community. And there was a significant, a marked, huge difference in how Urbana Police Department addressed, uh, the issue of community policing and, um, being, uh, um, the proverbial helper that we're all taught in grade school that police officers are, versus what we experienced, what I experienced, uh, on the other side of Wright Street. Um, we've had an SRO for twenty-six years. The chief has quoted statistics for the last five and a half. And I bet if we went back the whole twenty-six or twenty-seven years, uh, the statistics would, would show the same. That, um, before, uh, there was such a thing as, uh, a youth assessment center, uh, the Urbana Police Department participated all the time in station adjustments and in, um, teaching, uh, students, uh, teaching kids, uh, in, inside the school or outside the school, uh, about good citizenship and, um, uh, being able to make better choices. To me, uh, some of the negative discussions about this have been all centered around, uh, that, uh, you know, school to prison pipeline. And I just quite frankly, uh, don't buy, uh, that the Urbana Police Department has been a part of that. And I don't think they ever have, and I don't think they ever will be. Um, and when we look at, uh, the difference in training that an SRO has, uh, it even tilts it even more fur- further towards, um, the, um, educational role, which I stressed two weeks ago, that I want to see much more about the educational role. Um, but it, it really pushes it that way, uh, towards, um, good decision-making. I have been involved in a very peripheral way, um, starting in my professional, uh, career. We started at the RPC with, um, Peer Court, which grew to the, um, Youth Assessment Center. Um, and now, uh, Youth Assessment Center continues to be a program of the Regional Planning Commission, which I was an integral part of, um, helping to, uh, push that project forward. I think that, uh, as we see, um, District One Sixteen, most recently, decide on a partnership with the Youth Assessment Center. Uh, we see the Urbana Police Department making, um, extraordinary use of the Youth Assessment Center, making extraordinary use of station adjustments prior to that. Uh, all aimed at keeping young people out of the criminal justice system, as opposed to trying to put more and more of them in the criminal justice system. I think the statistics that the chief quoted tonight, which I was glad to hear, um, just exemplify the fact that when there have been issues that have required, um, law enforcement presence, uh, it invariably has ended in, um, a search for services as opposed to a search for a cell. I'm prepared to support this, because I don't view it as adding police officers to our school system. I view it as maintaining the police officer level that we have had for the last year. I don't view this as, um, view it lightly, however, um, because, uh, to be honest about it, six months ago, uh, I would have voted this down in a heartbeat. Um, but I watched what happened to our schools, and I've watched what has transpired, uh, since our, since we nearly lost control of our schools, our, our middle, our, our secondary campuses, not our elementary schools. I view the addition of an SRO to be a part of the team. I've been further convinced by the input that I've gotten from the staff and administration at the schools, including the mental health staff, the licensed clinical professionals that we brought on board, who have all said that they cannot do their job effectively as they would like to do it without an SRO. Um, and, um, so, uh, I've also, six months ago, when I was against this, I've been lectured by many that I needed to quit thinking that it was still the nineteen eighties, the nineteen sixties, uh, nineteen nineties, that it's a new century and a new time, and our children are facing different pressures. Goes to the comment earlier tonight by one of two, uh, adults of color that spoke, uh, that talked about the fact that if there was a bullet found in the school, there are guns in the school. Six months ago, I said, yeah, they found a bullet, there's no, there's no guns. But I've had too many people tell me that, no, we really need to, to open it up, uh, my thinking. I've been further convinced that many people are asking us to start wanding, uh, or putting, uh, metal detectors at our school doors, because that's what's happening everywhere else. I'm so violently opposed to that, I just can hardly even think about it. Um, but one thing that I have been told is that by having the presence of an SRO in the school, we defer, delay, hopefully eliminate ever, the need to have that kind of hardening of our school buildings uh, in order to present a safe zone. I'm a little bit like Ruth Ann, that I'm wandering around a little bit. I'm not referring, I did refer to notes earlier, but I do want to leave a little bit of, of notes that I put together while listening to the folks talk tonight. That until recently, Urbana school system, and in particular, the Urbana High School, was considered a safe zone. A place where community things, things that were happening in the community were left in the community. And the kids knew that, what, no matter what side of the conflict they were on, they could walk into the school and have trusted adults, have a safe environment, where they could actually speak across turf lines, speak across gang lines, and be in class with the same. That went away. It's gone away. We've got to get that reestablished. And part of getting that reestablished is making sure that our student intervention teams are complete. And the SIs, the SEAs, uh, the clinical professionals have all told me that the SRO is a critical member of that team. So, then it does become a question of whether we do halftime at each school or whether we do full-time at each school. And I'm not viewing this as a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget add. I'm viewing this as thank you to the city for being generous and taking care of this for twenty-six years, when every other school system in the United States is paying for it themselves. The piper has come home. It's time for us to not rely on the others. Unless we remember, the school district, um, about fifty percent of the school district is inside the city of Urbana. The rest of the school district is outside the city of Urbana. It is not up to us to rely on the city of Te- Sh- I'm a city taxpayer. Taxes to this, taxes to that, as long as something gets done, I guess I'm, I'm being equally taxed. But there's a whole lot of people that come to our school that are not taxed by the city of Urbana, and they ought to bear the, the brunt of this expense, because it is for the benefit of the schools. And, and so, I'm, I'm sorry we've come to the day, but the piper's come home. It's time to us, for us to pay for what we need. What has convinced me to move from a halftime officer at each building to a full-time officer at each building is the peep, the staff and the people that are working with our kids daily, who are pleading with us that the SRO be a member of their team, and that they be present there through the week. So, I know it's four times a halftime person, which we've all sat here and complained about several times, that the halftime person got pulled out to do X, Y, Z duty and wasn't there. Well, it's time they be there. And it is apparent to me from listening to the staff that, uh, a halftime person is not meeting the needs. Is not there enough to be a part of the team. And last, um, I've gotten a lot of input on this, and I have read every piece of email. I do want to indicate that this letter that's signed by all these people, I don't have it.
Oh, neither.
I don't think any school board member has received it. I have seen what I think might be a draft of it sent to me by somebody who is not part of the signatory group, but saw it somewhere online. I'm not a Facebook person, so I don't do Facebook, but I think they picked it up that way. So, that input has not been received by us. No.
While I speak, it was sent to your email address. If your email system doesn't work, it's not our responsibility.
I get every bit of email that comes to me by way of the district is forwarded to my personal email address. I do not have that email, and I've not received that email.
It's just a little concerning, because email is from your website, so that could be a huge issue. You could not be receiving email from all of your constituents.
No, we've received quite a few.
Well, I don't, I don't want to, we can't, we cannot partake in this. This is a discussion amongst the board. We can listen to it later. But we just need to make it real clear that apparently I'm not the only board member that has not seen that in an official sense. I've not seen the list of signatories. I've seen some. I've seen what I think was the first three or four days or something like that, because that is the time that I became aware that there was a letter being circulated, but it has not been received. However, I have received a lot of individual emails, addressed to my school account, and some addressed to me, because of the people that know me. Um, and I'm putting a lot more credence, a lot more credence, on the emails that I'm getting from people that have students at Urbana Middle School and at Urbana High School. Because they're the ones who are living right now what the situation is in our schools right now. And, um, that has, uh, the vast majority of those, there, there've been some on either side. And as I said, they're from people that I truly highly respect. But, um, the majority, by a significant, significant amount of emails that I've gotten from people who have students at the middle school and at the high school right now, today, not people who have fled to the next generation or fled to our, our entire system um, because of exactly the kind of problems that we're trying to resolve here. I'm putting my, I'm, I'm listening to them very carefully, and they're all in favor. So, um, that's, that's where I'm at. I think the thing that threw me completely over the top is when some of our newly hired, relatively newly hired, they've been here for a while, long enough to know what's going on in the high school and in the, in the middle school, when our clis- when our clinical folks are saying that they must have an SRO to make the team complete. That, that has locked up my vote. I'm done.
That's a hard one to follow. Um, but I will-
Yours was extremely hard to follow two weeks ago, and I gave some consideration to all of- As, as I've told a lot of people, I never make up my mind until I listen to everybody. Um, and, uh, I'm still listening.
Yeah. So, um, I did a lot of talking last time. I'm not going to, I'm going to try not to talk as much this time, because most of my points, um, were stated last time. But I will say that, um, I feel like there's no one better to know what's needed in the schools and the people that are in the schools every day. I mean, it's easy for, for us to look at a study halfway across the country and see what people are, um, saying about that particular study, but that study's not Urbana. And a lot of those studies and those schools do not compare to Urbana. So, not that I don't put any weight at all on those studies, but I do recognize the difference in the school districts. And part of that is studying and knowing the school districts. I mean, sometimes you have to dig a little further and say, what is the culture of this school? Um, what are the SROs doing in this school? Um, as I stated last meeting, um, I spend a lot of time in the schools, and that's not to knock anyone who doesn't have that time that I have to be in the schools. Um, I'm in a school building almost every day of the week. I'm at the high school at least twice a week. And I'm, I'm not there just to have a presence. I'm there to have conversations. I'm there to see what's happening. Um, I'm there to get to know the students, get to know the staff, um, understand the culture even better. Because you can't get a full grasp of the culture without being there. I think if, as board members, if we don't know what's going on in the schools, if we don't know what the people are saying in the schools, that's a board problem. It's not a school problem. We have to do our due diligence and study and ask questions, and I can tell you, I ask a lot of questions. You may not always hear those questions at these board meetings, because we're doing our due diligence between board meetings, at least I am, I really can only speak for myself, to ask those hard questions, to have those conversations, to weigh on what makes sense and what doesn't make sense for our Urbana schools. As I stated, I talked to over a hundred kids at Urbana High School, and I spent an entire day there. And I talked to Sage, and we had a good conversation, and I've talked to some of the other students here. But those students don't represent everyone. Our kids that can get here for these board meetings and that follow meetings don't represent all of our kids. And the majority of the kids I talked to, out of the over a one hundred that I spoke to, were in favor of having a full-time officer. They didn't want us to have to call officers in. Now, there was, like I said, a group of students who didn't even know we had SROs, which is probably a good thing. which is probably a good thing. It means that those officers are not aggressive. Because surely if they're aggressive, that 30% that I talked to that didn't know we had officers in the school would know we have officers in the school. They would know someone has a gun in the school. I respect all of those students that took the time to have conversations with me and talk, and some of them came back and asked questions, and it was good dialogue. I talked to almost every administrator at the high school level and a lot of them at the middle school level. And I didn't have one administrator that said, "I don't want a full-time SRO. I think part-time's better." Not one. I didn't have, I talked to three of the four SIs, not one of the three out of the four said, "Part-time's better." We had SEAs in a luncheon that John and I were in, and they said, "We have a limit. There's only so much we can do with some students before we need additional support." And we need that support to be there all day. We can't sometimes wait for a police officer to come into the school who knows very little in some cases about our school culture to come and deal with a student that a full-time SRO who probably already is starting to build a relationship if they don't already have one could maybe deescalate. Clearly, we've saw that Urbana, while other schools in the study may be a school-to-prison pipeline, Urbana clearly is not that. And yet, we see stories of things going on with our youth in the community. I personally know some of these kids. You can't tell me about some of the backgrounds. You can't tell me about some of the kids who don't have food, who are sleeping in houses that don't have power, that, you know, they don't know from day to day if they're even gonna have a place to live in. But I think that we, as a district, are trying to help those children. I mean, it shows in how much money we have put into social and emotional staff, mental health staff. I mean, I think we looked at that, and I actually asked for those numbers. I think that's a part of the reason why we looked at that at the last meeting, those in-between-the-meeting conversations that are happening. I can tell you, my opinion would have initially been no to this if I wasn't in the schools as much as I am. I mean, I'm an African American. I live in a almost 100% black neighborhood. As black children, we aren't taught to trust the police. It's a reality. It's a reality that I live in. It's a, it's a lifestyle that I'm even, with my own kids, trying to teach differently. Now, does that mean that I tell my kids, "Trust every officer that you see?" No, we take caution. But I don't tell them, "Hate the police, run from the police, don't, you're not responsible for your actions." I mean, some of what we allow to happen with these kids is really setting them up for failure after high school. We don't hold them accountable. I mean, how can we honestly say that we're helping a kid that never has any accountability and then they're out on the streets at 18? What do you think's gonna happen to those kids? When all their life, they've been, you know, things are brushed off and there's no accountability? What do you think's gonna happen? That's the real school-to-prison pipeline right there. We have to teach our kids, we have to hold them accountable, and we have to provide the services that are needed, including that meal that they need in the morning so that they can function. That social worker like Mistress Ice that they can go to and say, "Hey, my power's out at home," or "I don't have a bed to sleep in." But that SRO who's also present is the one that's saying, "Hey, you can do this. You don't have to go that road that's headed to prison. Let me help you. Let me show you a different way." I think that's what's missing in the conversation, is that everyone's thinking just of, "Oh, the school shooting's coming, and this police officer's gonna be the one to prevent it." They're not. They're not gonna prevent it. Not in that way. But what you may never know is the prevention of that kid who was walking into school every day with a gun, who made a connection with the SRO that was there whenever they needed them, and who didn't pull the trigger? Who talked it out with the social worker and said, "You know what? This is not the life I want. That jail that she took me to to visit on that, that little field trip, that's not where I wanna be." Those are the things we don't even see. We don't see the prevention. All we see is that one case of that one kid who shot up a house, and they happened to be an Urbana kid, and that's what we go by. And that kid probably has six or seven different cases, and now they're in jail. And we use that as our example because we can't see the prevention that could happen. That's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for a police officer that we have to call that halftime, that we don't have him there, that's coming, that has no connection with our kids. I don't want that. Our teachers don't want it. Our administrators don't want it. Our SEAs who are breaking up these fights, our SIs who are in the midst of this every single day, they don't want it, the majority of them. Who am I to say, "I'm sorry, you know, I understand you're saying you have your limits and this is what you need full-time, but I'm not gonna provide it?" We're already strapped to keep people in our buildings, to keep teachers happy, to keep these positions filled. And then we're gonna tell them, "No, you can't have the support that you're begging me for?" These individuals are emailing us every day. Now, while they may not be here to speak in person, I hold just as high a weight their emails as I would if they were sitting right there at the table speaking to everybody. And because they're in the midst of what's happening every single day, and I'm not, and most of you out there are not, I think we need to listen to them. I think we need to listen to the majority of the students that said, "This is a good thing." And so, I personally, for my vote, I'm in support of it. I'm in support of listening to our teachers. I'm in support of listening to our principals and our administrators. I'm in support of listening to our students. I want them to feel like they can talk to me at any point, and I'm gonna do what I can, even though that's not gonna always be a yes. And we're not gonna always agree. And one thing I do want to say about this board is, is I'm very proud that we can agree to disagree sometimes. We don't dislike each other when we walk out of here. I could easily go with Peggy tonight and have coffee 'cause I don't drink, you know? I'm happy that sometimes we're not on the same side and we don't agree, but at the end of the day, we still like each other. I'm gonna end there 'cause I feel like I've said enough. I'm in support, and I will say that with this two-and-a-half-year agreement, I would expect to see some pretty good things happening. I would expect, you know, data, I would expect students to be present to help select their officers, along with some of the people that are gonna be working with this person day to day, parents being involved. And I would expect for us to be re-reviewing because as these new people in their positions, our SEAs, our clinical professionals and everyone else, as they're in their positions and they're starting to get more comfortable, they're starting to have more longevity and understand their jobs, my thought is that we do re-review. You know, we do have those conversations. We do pull that data. We do see what we can do to help a little more at the lower levels in the elementary schools where they have additional needs. We do make sure that our Tier Three and Tier Four counselors are up to par. And we do all of those things. We don't trade one for another. We do what's right. And we also look overall at ways where maybe we have been wasteful in the past. I mean, I don't know everything that happened before I was here, but I do know that I am investigating some of those things and looking into some of those things and making sure that we are being fiscally responsible. I mean, that's important. This is my money, too. I pay taxes just like everyone else in Urbana. So again, I'm gonna end there, but my view is to be in support of one full-time at the high school, one full-time at the middle school, a re-review before that two-and-a-half period is up, lots of data and lots of stakeholders at the table as we work through this process.
I've always spent a lot of time listening. I do have a question, though, for Chief Seraphin, real quickly. I'm unfamiliar with the personnel review process that the officers go through as part of the union contract, I'm sure, like we have something similar on our side for staff members. And the agreement calls specifically, I mean, not specifically, kind of in a general sense, that the district will supply input to the police department with regards to review of the SRO. I was wondering, you know, how that has worked in the past?
So how it's worked in the past has been informal, but there has been outreach with the, usually with the high school principals who we've had done that in the past. I know for several years when I was overseeing the detectives, that it would be some time with Laura Taylor to say, "Hey, principal, how's it going? What's going wrong? What's going well? What's not going well?" We'd have a conversation like that. So that's how it's been in the past, no whether we, whether Dr. Avery Taven, I'd like to formalize that more, rework that a little bit. We didn't know, we weren't sure where we might land on it. And so that's why, if you look on the document on page 13 and paragraph eight, that's why it's sort of written in that fashion.
Thanks. I mean, that's the one thing I would ask, is that we kind of get our ducks in a row as we go through this, in this cycle, if we go forward with this, that we provide opportunities for formalizing input from students, from staff, from parents, administrators. When I first heard the proposal and I first saw the numbers come in, I got sticker shock. And my first thought was, heck no, we've got a litany of needs in this district. First and foremost, as far as I'm concerned, is this social, emotional support we've added at the secondary campus. We need more of them at the elementary buildings so that the kids come to the middle school better equipped. But then I started talking to staff members and started talking to parents, and much as John was saying, hearing the clinical professionals state that the SROs are a member of the team, and specifically what Officer Robinson has done at the middle school. And the great benefit she's brought to that building convinced me of two things. One, we need to have a full-time officer, not having to have an officer you can't depend on, who gets called away if detective load gets too high, isn't working. But we also need someone dedicated to the middle school. That's the point. We're having kids now who, and one of the pieces of education she does is a social media piece, and we've got kids who are being bullied online, we have kids who are maybe sharing inappropriate pictures online. And all those pieces of education around that is something she handles in terms of domestic violence and relationships between kids at the middle school. That's a piece that she also works with.
Sure, I'm sorry. So, you know, I wish we didn't have to do this, honestly, but I'm to the point where I think we should. So I'm in support of this.
Other board members' discussion.
I am in total support of this. I feel like we've heard from principals, administrators, several people in our district who are boots-on-the-ground every single day. We understand that there's a lot that happens in the community, and sometimes those issues are not handled correctly in the community. But I believe with some of the supports we have in our schools, we've deterred a few of those things from happening due to the people that we have in place now. So I am in support of one full-time SRO at the high school and one full-time at the middle school. I believe this is going to be a great peace of mind for not only our students, families, but staff also.
I wanna add something that I scribbled down and didn't catch, and that is that I strongly agree with the comments that have been made tonight about the fact that more prep time could have been quite valuable in adding the mental health support staff that we have done so, to the tune of $1.2 million a year at the middle and high school. What I'm hearing from those folks is that we cannot, that we're setting them up to be not as effective as we had hoped without an SRO being part of the team. And I am very respectful of how strident I was about not doing an adequate amount of planning and preparation. I think there is a little bit of difference here in that there was an experiment, and it was at the city expense when the full-time SROs were added to the buildings. And we now have, because those were added immediately after February the 4th, we're approaching, what, nine months of testing that. And we've heard from lots of people, I've heard from a lot of students, about how much better the high school is this year. I have to freely admit that anything I've got about the middle school is from the administrators and secondhand from parents, not directly from students. But I've talked to a lot of students about how much, these are seniors, who said they're so happy to see the school that they experienced as freshmen come back a little bit, a lot. And I think we need to reflect on the fact that SROs have been full-time, at full-time, are darn close to a full-time SRO at both buildings has been part of that solution. And so it's not quite as much as obligating a million bucks sight unseen. We've got a little bit of experience to draw from on what would amount to a budget add of not $300,000, but a budget add of roughly $270,000. Because even at our old level, we'd be, we'd be spending, the city has, gave us plenty of warning, plenty of warning, that they were no longer gonna be able to provide to us gratis any SRO time. I'm just adding that. Peggy, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I kind of wanted to follow up what you said in just another, kind of restating. I mean, I think we run a risk of attributing too much of the improved climate to the SROs. I mean, as we've heard from many people, there are improved relationships, improved systems. As one said very aptly, the adults are back in charge. The SROs may also have been there, but I have not heard anyone who could tell me, a teacher, parent, or student, that I know the climate is improved because of the SROs. Not to diminish their work there, but I think we run a risk if we attribute it to the SROs. I mean, as we've heard time and again, that the SROs are not in our schools to break up fights. That's not their job. They're there to be a resource, to be a, you know, help with community outreach, to assist with social media infractions when that happens. You know, by their own, the agreement that they shared with us, SROs are not formally trained as counselors. They don't, they're not, you know, they are not certified to do counseling or training. So again, I think we run a risk of we attribute too much of what our trained professionals do to the SROs by their own statement. But as I said, they are there to be a resource. They are there to provide a community link. They do valuable things. We do not need, however, a full-time SRO in each building to provide that value to us, to provide that benefit. A single SRO would be dedicated to our campuses. They wouldn't get pulled out to do something else in the community. They'd be part of the team. But again, I think locking ourselves into a two-and-a-half-year commitment of an annual three- But again, I think locking ourselves into a two and a half year commitment of an annual $320,000 personnel expense for two and a half years is unwise, unwarranted, and frankly, I think is an irresponsible use of our, of our district dollars that we don't have. So, you know, again, we can always scale up, but I think one full-time at this time is a reasonable next step. We can always scale up, you know, but once we lock into that two and a half years, that's that. I mean, I think that's, is just premature.
My response to that has been the middle school's complaint, that if we have one full-time person split between the two buildings, that the middle school feels like they're short shrifted. And my guess is if we talk to the high school, we'd get the same response from the high school, that they're short shrifted. Anytime that Officer Galiz for the middle school. So, that's, I'm, that's my.
Clearly, there'd have to be agreements in place on how they would work things out. I mean, we did it with one halftime for 26 years, and I didn't hear a whole lot of, I'm getting short shrift. I think, I think one full-time person could figure that out with input from our administrators. But I, I think it's premature to quadruple it based on the events of last year, which I, again, I think this is a, an overreaction to the poor planning and implementation that happened last year with the administrators in charge.
I'm sensing a four-three split if this is put to a vote. And, um, the addition of a three, almost $400,000 to our budget on a four-three vote is doable. But, um, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the administrators. I'm, I'm gonna ask the administrators if, um, if a delay of a couple of months for board members to ask and further pursue questions, or maybe till the December meeting, is that? I know we're facing an issue here because this is a two and a half timeframe with the idea that you would have a full-time, fully-trained, fully-equipped SRO in place by next September. And we would be dealing with our current personnel. I know that one is properly trained. I'm sorry, I don't know if Darren's fully trained as an SRO.
Yes, Darren is fully trained as an SRO. The issue becomes when we want to move to this full-time, that I have to, again, I'm pulling them out of that, that resource. So, if we go back yet another month and wait, and then that delays us in trying to, how we plan to essentially backfill those people coming out. I can pluck somebody out and stick them in the high school again, but then I'm just slower in trying to refurbish that where the patrolmen are. And that, those blue uniforms are the ones that are responding to those calls.
That, that's what I'm asking.
So, that's, that's the tricky part is, is trying to accommodate that.
And I'm sure the city has a timetable at which point they will have to withdraw the support that's there without our support because of your budget cycle.
Correct, sir.
And I, I know that's not the, nobody's intention, but I'm just saying that the reality of it is, we all will live in a budget world. And the worst thing in my mind is we reach a point where we have no SROs. And so, um, I'm, I'm throwing that out there. Ruth Ann, you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, and so the public understands, and since I've been here since 1999, when we have had split votes, we have always, when something has been voted in, we have always rallied for the cause. We have never had a board member just totally go off the rails and hate, hate, hate something that only four board members approved. We own it after it's voted on, and that's the way we will continue to do things.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not intimating that because certainly I've sat here at the table and we've had four to three votes on budget reductions as well as budget adds. But, um, I'm just throwing it out there a little bit that, um, is there any path towards greater understanding, mutual understanding, so that people are, if people are very comfortable with their vote, we move forward.
I'd like to ask, though, what Peggy had suggested. I mean, why, if we had a part-time person for both buildings, why couldn't it be one person who traveled back and forth between the two schools? I mean, it's, they're close together. If there was an emergency in one of the other buildings, that person's already there. I mean, the length of time it would take for some, an officer to potentially be in the third floor of UHS and respond to something, say, in the farthest corner of the gym, is almost the same amount of time for somebody to go from UMS to go. Well, no, I mean, I'm not saying who it has to be, but why does it have to be two separate people? Why couldn't it be the same officer for both schools?
So, I, I, I would invite one of the principals up, but I, I will respond. And I think we're forgetting the numbers that we put off. We have a thousand students at UMS and over 1,100 at UHS. And to have one person, and we've been sitting in these luncheons, and I know we've been talking about, the climate is so much more improved. And, and, and again, I agree with Peggy. That is not just because we have Darren McCartney there three days a week, and sometimes we have somebody on Monday and Fridays. And as well as, and Michelle being at the middle school. But I could ask Chief or, or Deputy Chief back there to share. There are a lot of Mondays and Fridays where we have had things happen, and we don't have anybody there. And to think of, I mean, I could have them come over and share. Just when Darren was on vacation, I was over there three days in a row, I think. And Michelle can't, I mean, we're talking 1,100 students. And, um,
Just at the high school.
That's just at the high school. And, and I, I guess I'm using the high school as an example because the middle school's been very fortunate to have Michelle since September. But we've had a lot of things that have happened when we did not have anyone there. And that all falls on our administrators, that falls on the support staff, and it falls on me and my team because we're over at the high school a lot, problem-solving with them when there are things that happen, when we don't have anyone there. And we've talked about when we have to make these calls, when Darren's not there, we don't know who's gonna come. And we don't know, and that, and that's not, and I know the chief's smiling. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just saying, when we have people who don't know our kids, who don't know our teachers, who don't know our culture, who don't know our systems and our environment, it is much more challenging, opposed to, you know, Michelle knows everybody's name. I know Darren has a different style and personality. And we've talked a lot about how careful and how thoughtful and intentional we will be in hiring this new person. Of course, we can't clone Michelle. I've heard that in a couple places. Can we just clone Michelle at the high school? But the characteristics that she promotes and displays with the students at the middle school is exactly what we would be looking for at the high school. And the longer we delay that, and the days that we don't have anyone are the days that worry me when Michelle can't get to the middle school. And I, I know it sounds like they're right next door, but when something is jumping off and happening really quickly, I, I just don't want to rely on that. And we've been relying on that more than you guys probably even know. I know we've been saying they've been covered full-time, but there are a lot of Mondays and Fridays and we don't have anybody. And, and there have been troubling things that have happened that we've dealt with and the team has dealt with. And we've tried to support them through that, but that's more Mondays and Fridays than we, we want to see in the future. I'm just gonna say that.
I think just the workload alone for one person, it would be too much. Depending on the paperwork and them trying to form bonds with our students, it would be overwhelming.
Kids are getting dropped off at the middle school, starting at what, seven? It would be, before that, just because, because I'm there dropping kids off quarter to eight because they have something early. Right. So, I don't know how you can cover the drop-off periods with, with one person in both buildings.
And I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just add real fast. I'm gonna steal your line. Prevention through connection. I like that, and I think that's one of the things that would be much, that would be harder. I mean, that's why there's the best practice from Nazaros, where it says, hey, you're one per school or, you know, per thousand, and we're way above that. Since last October, we had an ask from the school district to help and fulfill. So, as last September was rolling and there's town hall meetings and whatnot, we were already, the city was like, okay, we will already give you Darren, or I guess it was Steinberg at the time, full, you got him. Forty, we were just, we were already pushing him and giving him more than his halftime back last October. We sort of limped into the holiday finish line, and then everyone knows about February. Historically, Deanne Winmauer was one of the hardest-working police officers I ever was around in the city of Urbana. An old badge, 346, would go to that school, and she would work that high school, and she would work that middle school, to the point that at some point, when I became a supervisor, I watched her. I came in on a Saturday afternoon, for some reason, in the building. I said, what are you doing here? She says, I'm trying to catch up on reports. Because she was a halftime, split between two schools. It's clearly not an ideal situation. And, and so, at that point, at one point, I said, it's fine. There's an SRO. They will be the high school SRO, and if the middle school needs something, they'll have to wait in line. Or they just will pick up the phone, dial 911, and we'll get the next available car up. So, I, I do appreciate this, and I, and I get it. I, I just don't know that anybody is a look at all of the totality of everything, that that's a real viable solution with regards to going to one.
I, I'd like to challenge board members to spend a day in these schools. I, I don't think you can conceptualize behind the desk, sending an email, asking for opinions. You can't get a grasp that way of the school, of the climate, of, you know, when needs are being met and when needs are not being met, of when there's three hot fires going on at once, and the same thing's happening at the middle school at the same time. I mean, all resources are being used at some point. It's, it's been a day.
But I would counter that with something I heard today at the middle school from a veteran teacher who said that the new incoming teachers who are working there don't have a grasp on their own policies about disciplining kids. That, so that things that start as a minor thing with a kid acting up in class, leaving class without permission, coming into a class without permission, those things aren't being nipped in the bud early enough, and that's something that I would love to see us addressing with our own existing staff so that things don't escalate. And it's something that we, you know, I know we're understaffed. We're woefully understaffed. But also, our incoming teachers can be getting support from veterans in there. It's, I know it's a different culture, but I'm really shocked by hearing some of the stories I do about kids, the way they talk to the adults in the buildings, the way they deal with other kids. That's something at the front end that we should be talking about so that we don't have to deal with the back-end stuff with, that where it gets to a police officer. And I would love to say, that's something we can be addressing. We're not sure yet, because like I said, we're still in year one, and we don't know 100% if the improved climate is down to having police officers in the building. We just don't have the data yet. And so, I really want to be cautious and make sure that we, we are working all of this year to collect as much data as we can on what our, our new support staff is doing, how they're receiving direction, how they're being consistent with their own policies. And, you know, that they are not doing each other's jobs while other jobs are getting not taken care of. That everybody has a job, they know what it is, and they're working together, and it's seamless. And then, you know, that takes time to figure that out. And when we figure that out, I'm absolutely thrilled to support whatever comes out of that because then I will know that we did our due diligence by it. And I think that having a police officer in the buildings, I've said it, I agree with it. I think it's a good preventive measure of keeping kids, once they become adults, out of that, out of that system because they're making better choices when they're younger with people who care about them.
For me, I, I'm not willing to take a piece of the puzzle out while they're trying to figure it out. While those first-year teachers are trying to learn their jobs, and they are, there are people that are trying to support them, while our new SEAs are there literally in a meeting begging us to have SROs, saying, I, I am starting to get my job. I'm, I'm getting it. You know, I see the, the wheels turning in kids, but I still need the support. I'm not willing to pull out the rug while they try to get it together and learn their, their positions. I'm just not. That, that just doesn't make sense to me personally, to say, you're learning your job, and I'm gonna take a resource that you have full-time and move it down to part-time and give you less.
And the classroom management things that you're referring to.
Is, is a different topic.
That, those are not things that Michelle would insert herself in anyway. I mean, those are administrative, you know, our administrative team would deal with those. The middle school is richly staffed with human capital to help support those new teachers who are struggling with classroom management things. I mean, I think that's everywhere. Yes, and they, yeah.
And Tori, I would just say that, for me, I think those in support of this quadrupling is focusing the flashlight on the wrong resource. As we heard from our talks with the high school teachers and the middle school teachers today, SROs are not there to break up a fight. And as Mike told us tonight, a fight could happen, the SRO steps back. What we need are more trained professionals and more support for our existing trained professionals because they are the ones that are keeping the peace. I think we're just, I think we're just looking in the wrong direction. Absolutely, we need to provide support to the people who are there, but I think putting our, our rocks in that bucket is misguided. And, and again, an irresponsible use of our limited personnel dollars, locking us in needlessly. For 26 years, we had a halftime person. Last year was an anomaly for all kinds of dysfunction that happened that I regret because I was on the board when it happened. It is a different time, but doubling is a reasonable increase. We can always jack it up. But we need to put our, not, not lose sight of what really matters, which is our trained professionals. The SROs are a resource. It's the other people, the trained clinical professionals, the teachers. We need more of them. We need more social workers and more support for them. I, I think we're, we're shifting our, our gaze in, in the wrong direction. I mean, we're, we're, our, you know, we're losing sight of the prize again, as we did last year, and, and we shouldn't do that again. We just don't have money to do all of it, and I think we need to focus on what, what really matters in keeping safe schools.
Could I ask for a favor?
Everybody wants transparency. This is a transparent debate, folks. And I'm gonna counter that, that I was where, exactly where you are, Peggy, until it was the clinical folks and the SEAs and SEAs and the SIs that pled with Tori and I at the same time, at, at face-to-face and by way of written correspondence, pled that they cannot do their job properly without a full-time SRO. That's, that's what they said, and I, I have to, I have to, I have to respect that, that if we're going to assess the effectiveness of the million, point, 1.2 million that we're spending with additional human capital on the mental health side, and that 1.2 million worth of people is telling us that they need the SROs, if we expect them to be able to perform effectively, then that's my, that tipped me towards the direction of supporting this, as opposed to, um, and so, I've, I think we, we have, I don't want to cut off, but it is 1040. And so, either a motion to approve, a motion to continue, the discussion would be, I, I would be open to that. So, and, and then we can have plenty of debate after a motion is on the floor, but I just feel we need to get something on the floor. By strict parliamentary procedure, we should have had the motion and then debated it. We've been debating it and the concept. And now, I think it's probably time to restore a little bit of order back here. So, let's have something to address, other than the philosophical issues. Let's have a action to take a look at.
I'd like to motion to approve.
The what?
Hiring of the two SROs.
The administrative recommendation?
Administrative recommendation.
That, that'll do it, if you, if that's what you're approving. I wasn't sure what you were.
All right. Intergovernmental agreement between the city of Urbana.
Okay, there is a motion to approve the administrative recommendation on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, discussion. I guess we are debating exactly what we have been debating, but take it from there, folks.
And this is for two and a half years?
I share your concern. I mean, I, I, this board will survive a four-three vote, but I, for something this substantial, I wish it weren't a four-three vote. I'm just trying to think of a possible compromise of any sort. The only way I could, the only way I could think of, and I don't even think this is really feasible, would be is if, if we change this to an 18-month agreement with a, with a one-year rider that we could vote on later, if that would sway anybody. But that, but we probably would need to make the change, run it by legal, and that would not get us by tonight.
Well, I tried to consider that, and then, to be honest about it, I, my administrative background, thinking about hiring somebody for an 18-month contract is, and. thinking about hiring somebody for an eighteen-month contract is, and- I recognize the administrative difficulties that that would raise because I believe that this is going to be, if the hiring process is done in the Urbana way, which I think we've all agreed to, even the people that support this motion, want the hiring to be done in the Urbana way. For those that are listening, that means with plenty of input from interested parties, that this is gonna be at least a six-month hiring training before the person is on board. And so if it's an eighteen-month project, that gives a person one year.
Well, truth be told, if we can get this, we would probably begin that selection process for that high school permanent position. We'd have to in-house consider what Darren's options were as this would change. And then we would begin that. So again, we would pull that person out so that they'd be ready to rock and roll January first-ish, whatever, whenever the school year would start. That would be our goal.
That would be the goal, but I think it's a little bit ambitious with the school district's side of the selection process.
Well, we would do a combined, like, our people would participate.
I understand that.
Right, got it.
I'm just looking at the fact that it's almost Thanksgiving. It's gonna take you a little bit of time to select the people that's gonna be on the committee.
We wouldn't be doing anything till January, yes.
And so having a person ready to rock and roll January first is an admirable goal, but not feasible.
If we, yeah, well, I, we've got six weeks.
You can have Darren on the job a little bit more, but you cannot have the permanent person.
Sure, understood, yeah.
So can I ask a question, going back to what Paul just said in terms of what could we do? So, I mean, we've got seventeen pages here that, between our attorneys and Carol and I and other people that have looked at this and all the city folks that have looked at it, I think this is like two times, maybe three times in length comparatively to some of the other SRO agreements that we-
Three times from the thing we started with.
And I think, based on, I mean, we looked at Champagne, St. Joe's, Toluino's.
Yes, those are all, those are the, those first three, I think, were the models that we used to build this from.
And ours is much more in-depth. I think we were, I know several people came up tonight and talked about some of the things that we do have in our agreement. So, you know, Eldra's car, I think we've, we've got some very specific rules about interviewing and talking to students and how we would interview the SROs and supervising the SROs, and how we're gonna be sharing information and what information they're entitled to and what information they're not entitled to, and the things that they're supposed to do and that they're not supposed to do. So, I mean, I, if there are things in the agreement that maybe we could, I think the only thing that we left open is basically what Paul mentioned, is we wanted to have a review process that would incorporate all voices. Because that's not, and that's something, I think, we can, we can have this agreement, and we can add that, it's just, we know that that's the way we're gonna do it. You know, the chief's not gonna just call Mitch and say, "Hey, how's the SRO going over there?" And that constitutes the evaluation, so we would have a, but again, you know, they're not using the same rubrics that we use, frameworks, you know, things that we use to evaluate our staff are very different than what the police would use. So the chief and I said that we would, you know, we would come together and talk about what that tool would look like, but that it would be a comprehensive tool. So I think that is the only piece that is, I guess, a little, hm? A little fuzzy in here. But everything else, I think we very much tried to think about those pieces, which is why this is a much more lengthier document than we originally set out for it to be. So if there are things in here that help you guys, that we need to go back and talk about, I think we could do that administratively.
Well, how about the length of the commitment? I mean, why does it have to be two and a half years? I mean, that really is, we don't-
I mean, we can talk about that. I think the half, the half, the half year was really just basically what John has talked about. I mean, we just need that much time to get the position posted, to get someone in it and hired and all of that. The two years really was we wanted to set this person up for success. And, you know, building relationships with students doesn't happen overnight. I mean, Michelle's just, she's been there a few months now, and I know she's still feeling like it's the very beginning. Joe and I were just talking that I think even in a few months, he's still trying to get her acclimated to, it's not gonna just automatically happen. So, you know, I think even a year, we thought was not enough, right? We want them to really, and again, we've talked a lot about all of our support staff in allowing, we've got a new principal at the high school who is really building his team and building their systems. And so really giving this person two years to be part of that team. So instead of three years, or four years, or five years.
No, yeah, no, I was talking about shortening it.
Yes, yes, oh, yes.
A large financial commitment for our district and-
I would like it tied to our fiscal year, as opposed to two and a half years just through June thirtieth of-
Instead of January, yeah.
Yeah, so a year and a half, as I can say.
I know you have a different fiscal year, so maybe we could talk about the two different fiscal years. Your fiscal years, does the city fiscal year still start on May one?
The city's fiscal year starts July one.
July one.
We're both on a July one fiscal year, perfect. So it ought to be through June thirty of twenty twenty.
And we have that set up in here for quarters. So the way that we're going to reimburse is through that quarterly system, which would align with our fiscal, both of our fiscal years.
I mean, I know I'm the one who kind of threw that out, but my concern would be with the shortening of it, if we would reduce the pool of applicants.
Yes.
So that would be the downside to having a shorter term on this agreement is we might get, you know, less, a smaller pool of applicants than we would otherwise get.
It is now a quarter to eleven. Is anybody's votes changing? Anybody's minds changing?
Are you going, are you, do you want to change the length? Because if you do, you have a motion and a second on the floor for two and a half. You will now need to vote it down, or we all abstain. And then bring, then, we need to make a motion and a second to vote on a one and a half year, is what I am looking at and thinking about.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to limit it to one and a half years.
I'm not either.
Because I think we're, I think by the time someone selected it, it's just too short a time period. Myself.
We've got four, there's four of you that are gonna vote for it, so-
Are you expecting the chair to call for a vote?
Yes. You've got a motion and a second, right?
I'm gonna call for a vote unless there's an objection. I think a roll call would probably be in order.
Well, we have to.
Oh, yeah, it's spending money. Thank you, sorry. We must roll call.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
No.
Member Pulaski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes no. Vice President Hall.
No.
President Demmett.
Yes, motion carries four to three.
And on we go.
Proposed tax levying, Carol? We're moving on to the next item, and there's an action item.
Nothing more to say, this is just acting on what I presented earlier. So you just have to approve it.
So a motion to approve the administrative recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all, I'm sorry, roll call.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Pulaski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Hall.
Yes.
President Demmett.
Yes. Motion is carried. There's no call for a future special executive committee meeting. However, we are going to have one after the close of this meeting. Superintendent's report?
We can forego that, it was short anyway. We'll save it.
Board reports.
I'm looking forward.
Foyt is, we have to talk about Foyt. I'm sorry, pardon, superintendent's report.
Yes, okay, sorry about that. Fox Champagne News, Hayden Clotter, wanting to know the number of times in which schools received a threat of violence on social media. For example, a student saying they would shoot up the school, which in turn were reported to the police since January two thousand nineteen. And that has been resolved. A second, Champagne News Gazette, Ben Zichterman. Any and all subpoenas and all search warrants received from federal investigative authorities, including but not limited to the FBI and the US Attorney's Office within the date range, January one, two thousand nineteen to present. That one, in case people are wondering what that one might be about, we, on our superintendent group, every district in our county also received that same claim. So it wasn't targeted just to us or anything, so that was.
Okay. Any board reports this evening?
I'm looking forward to going to Chicago and learning more about our schools, and I am a delegate for us, so I'll be bringing back lots of information for you.
Do you want to publicly indicate which way you're leaning on Resolution one and three?
On Resolution one and three, I've talked to other board members, and I am, we, not I, even though I am the delegate, but we are not in favor of arming our teachers with weapons.
Okay. With that, Tori?
I typically would have did this during public announcements, but I left that for the SRO discussion. But I have a check on behalf of the Champagne Urbana Optimists Club for Urbana Middle School in the amount of two thousand dollars for, which Joe knew was coming. And this is for their Student of the Month and for something a little different this year. We're gonna recognize and honor some teachers and staff members as well that are, that are doing great things. And I think that honor is long past due, and I think that these funds can help, so. Joe was expecting this. And I just want to put a plug in for everybody that the Optimists Club will be selling Christmas trees starting November thirtieth. We're in the lot by Taco Bell, and this is at Furniture. All of the money that we raise, we do only two fundraisers a year. One is selling Christmas trees, the other is taking tickets at the Champagne County Fair. Every penny goes back into Champagne County. So we do, you know, Jefferson Archery Club, we're part of starting that club. All youth activities. We would not have this two thousand to give to Urbana Middle School without people coming and buying Christmas trees. So if you're leaning towards an outside agency versus being able to actually help the kids in our community, please come out and buy a Christmas tree. Thank you.
Michael's left, but I went to see the school play, and it was really terrific. Michael was one of the stars, so I'll get, I'll catch him another time. But just a shout-out to the High School Drama Club, that wonderful production. All right, with that, we will, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session for purposes of personnel and real estate. Oh, that whole thing? Oh, just the two, thank you. Motion to adjourn to closed meeting for the point, purposes of two things. First, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. That's the first. And the second one is the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Roll call.
Roll call, roll call, going into closed session, sorry.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Exum.
Yes.
Member Patton. Member Pulaski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Hall.
Yes.
President Demmett.
Yes, we are.